Good evening, Council. I think I see everybody is here. It is City Council Regular Meeting 6:33 Tuesday, December 15, 2020, our last meeting of this First thing up is our call to order. Do you want to do roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Mauchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Meeting Accessibility Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live, city website www.samamish.us/tv21. There's a city YouTube or Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. To view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. Again, city website www.samamish.us/tv21. There's the YouTube or Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Pam, do you want to do it? I see your flag. Would you like to do the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, why not? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. First up, we have the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Exactly.
I have a first and a second. Any comments? Hearing none. First and a second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Seven zero. Next up is Emergency Management, and we have our emergency management, Andrew Stevens, here this evening.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is Andrew Stevens. I'm the emergency manager for Eastside Fire and Rescue. Nearly 10 months ago, when I first came before this council to present upon the first cases of coronavirus that were to reach the U.S., that were in our neighboring community of Kirkland, I do not believe that many of us could have foreseen what would have come through the remainder of 2020. Over 300,000 Americans have died as a result of this pandemic, and the past month alone has brought us several of the worst single-day fatality counts in modern history, in modern U.S. history, including a single-day record for COVID of over 3,000 deaths in a single-day last week. Across the nation, cases continue to exponentially climb. As current mitigation struggle against the runaway community spread, and in some areas of the country, noncompliance with public health recommendations appear to be more of the norm versus the exception. The reality that our current state of the pandemic is at its worst point since it began is a hard pill to swallow. The recent advancements in the fight against COVID-19 will hopefully begin to turn the tide over the next few months. Across the nation, the first COVID-19 vaccines are being delivered and provided to frontline medical workers and those populations most vulnerable to severe illness and death from the virus. With additional vaccines seeking FDA authorization for emergency use and a robust logistical network being stood up to begin widely distributing the vaccine, authorities are predicting that the U.S. could see widespread herd immunity by the summer of 2021. While it is fantastic news that we now appear to have effective and safe vaccines available that will protect against the coronavirus, it is so very important to understand that without continued widespread compliance with all other public health recommendations, especially now during this widespread outbreak that the U.S. is currently experiencing, many tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, may still die until that herd immunity is achieved. Another change, however, which may come to some relief to Samamish residents, was the addition of a free, high-capacity COVID testing site in Bellevue, the first such location located within Eastside communities. The drive-through Bellevue site will be open Monday through Saturday from 9 to 5, and appointments are recommended, however they're not required. I'd like to remind everyone that these testing sites are for those who have symptoms and need a COVID test. They should not be used to confirm negativity so that one may socialize over the holidays. Now, a few weeks ago, the city's Samamish released a COVID-19 impact survey to provide insight into the needs of our residents, which may not have been overly visible due to the nature of this incident. The survey has seen remarkable participation. With nearly 1,000 responses so far, the results provide key insights into the needs of our community and how City Council may elect to address those needs through additional support or funding. So here are a couple key takeaways. When looking over the responses, 6.8% of those respondents stated that they were recently unemployed due to COVID. However, some of those left their job to assist with their families at home. 3.5% of respondents claimed to be experiencing extreme financial stress. Now, the greatest concerns of all the respondents were firstly, becoming infected with COVID-19, the overall safety of their community, helping children with schoolwork at home, access to childcare, and continued access to medical and mental health services. Lastly, there were 12 residents that were very concerned about their continuity of housing, and there were 13 that were very concerned about their access to food. The survey was distributed to the community through a variety of means, including the city's newsletter, social media, and a postcard that was mailed to every household. This model has been shared across the region, and neighboring jurisdictions are already beginning to roll out similar needs assessments. The plan is to continue accepting responses until the end of the month to provide residents with additional opportunities to participate. I've been meeting with my colleagues in the city to discuss the results of the survey, and I believe Samamish's Human Services Coordinator will be addressing the council following my report, and will be able to provide greater insight into the current organizational needs of nonprofits providing that assistance. And then later this evening, the council will be addressing the second round of business and nonprofit grants as well. To assist in those discussions, I wanted to provide a quick update concerning the incident expenses so far. To date, the city has spent roughly $1.1 million of the $2.9 million that was earmarked for COVID-19 response and recovery, 420,000 of which was spent on the previous small-business grants, and 315,000 which has gone to support human service organizations in the region. So lastly, I would like to thank the residents of Samamish for their continued resiliency in the face of this pandemic. This community has rallied together to support one another through this entire event and continues to do so. The pandemic has affected us all in countless ways, and as the winter months and holiday seasons now approach, social isolation will become even more emotionally and mentally taxing. So if you're in need of services or seeking information on how to connect to any of the various organizations assisting those impacted by this crisis, I urge residents not to hesitate to contact the city for support. So I want to wish everyone a safe and healthy holiday and New Year. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, looking at the chat box. So does anybody have any questions for Andrew? Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thanks, Andrew. I'm really glad you guys are reaching out to the community. The one question I did have, we talked about this a little bit last time, was that there's no way for people to respond except for online, and I'm trying to get to the page. It looked like there was a statistically significant number of people who were concerned about internet access, which I found kind of interesting since they were online responding. But is there a way for us to get a sense of how many people? I guess my concern is that the people most in need are probably the ones least likely to have access to the internet, which means they can't respond to the survey. So how will we understand the needs of those folks who won't have access to respond? And do we have a plan to really be able to reach out and understand their needs and possibly get them the help that they need?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember. Following last two weeks ago's meeting, I did respond to that question in email. One thing, I think, it was a topic for discussion. We were concerned, like you stated, that those in need may have limited access to internet. However, through those discussions, and I think through, you know, looking at several of the programs regionally that have been provided to low-income individuals for free internet access through Comcast, Xfinity, and through cellular services, you've seen a great ability, a push from the private sector to ensure that these individuals do have access to some sort of internet capability, just because there has been such a reliance on homework and tele-school. So we felt that, by and large, that problem was not necessarily a problem. We spoke with several individuals in school districts who were involved in parent PTAs, and the same issue did arise. They weren't able to actually identify anyone within that district who did not have internet access. Now, there might be a small, small percentage of our population who doesn't, and I think just based on the numbers that we were able to see, the very small percentage of those who truly are in need, with the vast majority of folks who did respond, 1,000 out of, you know, 65,000 residents, which is a pretty good subsection, you might be able to add a little bit of buffer. You might be able to extrapolate, you know, through discussions with your Human Services Coordinator, the need on the ground, which may not be captured within this already. But for the most part, I don't think it is a large enough problem to try to come up with, I guess, a dedicated staff solution to answer the survey over phone and still try to maintain, I guess, individuals' privacy and anonymity.
Yeah, and that's actually not what my question was, Andrew. Thanks for that. My question is just, as we extrapolate what these survey results mean, right? I'm just glancing through them. You just sent them out this afternoon, and so in glancing through them, almost 80% of the respondents are white, and we know that people can only respond online. So it's not so much about how can we reach those people who don't have internet access, it's how can we extrapolate these results and understand that while, you know, we may have certain percentages of people who are concerned about, you know, food insecurity or housing insecurity, we probably aren't reaching the people who need it the most. So is there a way for us to extrapolate those results and make sure that when we do start to provide access to human services needs, that we're kind of counting that in? And I just found the page. It said that there were 45 people who responded who said they were very concerned about internet access, and 76 who were somewhat concerned. And again, these are people who clearly have access right now and are responding. So that leads me to believe that there would be some number of people out there that we're not getting. So I just want to make sure that as we take in these results, which, again, I'm so happy that we're doing this survey, that we are extrapolating what it means for the people that we aren't reaching. And I just want to make sure we take, because again, I feel like those people are probably the ones, the elderly and the people who probably aren't online as much. Again, if you look at, you know, how did a lot of people hear about it? The majority of people heard about it on Facebook or Twitter or Nextdoor, which are all, you know, things that probably your older populations and some of your other populations may not have access to or may not be participating in a lot.
Surprisingly, Councilmember, over the last just day or maybe two since I think I sent you the council the report, we've had a massive increase of responses from the postcard, which is really starting to hit homes. I know it hit the 980-74. So we've had over 400, close to 450 responses, so almost half from the postcard itself. So that is probably targeting some of that population you're talking about.
Well, I'll just throw it out there then for Rita, as we extrapolate these results to keep in mind, that those who are most in need probably or may not have internet access and may not be able to respond to this survey. So I just want to throw that out there.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's a good comparison to be able to look at. This survey is just one tool in the toolbox, and if we're looking at the actual organizations providing assistance, they're providing direct feedback to staff as well, it's easy to kind of see the correlation.
Yeah, because again, if you look at your survey results, 40% of the people responding have a household income of $195,000 or more. So these are probably not the folks that are most in need that we're, you know, need to look at assisting. So it's great data to have. We just need to keep that in mind.
Okay, Council, did we have any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Great job. And you're going to be staying with us for, great. Okay. Okay, next up, we have got a Human Services update with Rita, and I believe she's on the line. I thought I saw her. Rita, are you with us?
I'm with you, but virtually, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Hello. Good evening, Mayor, City Council and City Manager. My name is Rita Bud, and I'm the Senior Human Services Coordinator for the city. And I'm speaking with Council this evening to give a Human Services update. So in many ways, the human services landscape has worsened somewhat, especially compared to the early days of the pandemic. The terrain is a little bit more predictable with providers understanding the new COVID norm better. So this doesn't mean that there isn't increased need. Simply, we just understand the need more. So we've been in regular contact with providers, and here's what we've heard. Lifewire, the main domestic violence advocacy provider on the east side, told us that in addition to the continued growth in safety and financial crisis caused by COVID, there's also an increase in suicidality in children, teens, and adults who are forced to live in close proximity to abusive partners and parents. In the area of mental health, providers are seeing an escalation in the severity of mental health symptoms in current clients, in depression and anxiety. And they're also seeing a significant increase in OCD, with conditions leaving this increase has been brought on by the anxiety of the pandemic and a need to control external circumstances during this turbulent time. Both healthcare authority modeling and data from King County Public Health is supporting a projected spike in mental health needs. Washington State Rent Moratorium has been extended several times, and it now has been extended to the end of the month. We've been in particular close contact with rental assistance providers. We know that the demand for rental assistance is compounded by the impact of COVID. Imagine Housing is a landlord to a low-income housing complex in the city, and they're also taking part in the King County Eviction Prevention and Rent Assistance Program. This is to assist households economically impacted by COVID, unable to meet their rent obligations, and are at risk of eviction. We know that this particular property, there are 28 households and renters. And at this time, we don't know how much money will be received by Imagine Housing to help residents, but we're keeping in close contact with them. So staff believe that we need to wait until early 2021 to better understand the rental assistance needs in the community. Throughout the pandemic, Crisis Line has seen record number of calls. In quarter three, 2019, they had 138 calls. And in comparison, a year later, in quarter three, 2020, they had a total of 810 calls from residents. Demand for services has increased with Eastside Baby Corner adding more than double the number of holiday gift orders over 2019. And Issacar Food and Clothing Bank has increased their spending of their youth feeding program, PowerPak, from 22,000 in 2019, 2024 year, to a projected astronomical 233,000 in the 2021, 2022 school year. Nonprofits such as Food Bank are identifying a shift from being a provider of goods to supplement a family to now being a provider of goods vital to sustaining a family. In September, you may recall, City Council approved staff's recommendation of over $325,000 to be given to 14 nonprofits, covering basic needs such as food, shelter, rental assistance, mental health services, seniors, and domestic violence. What we heard from the majority of providers is that they have not yet spent the funding that we allocated to them. The reason for this is that they need to spend down CARES Act money given to them by other municipalities. CARES Act funding, as you know, is time-sensitive and has to be used by the end of the year. Providers are deeply appreciative of the flexibility of having the ability to use Samamish funds into next year. Collegations for Homeless said in January, "January will be the month where this money will be a lifesaver." New Eastside Services said, "City of Samamish funds are part of our strategy to assure a safe landing into 2021." Lifewire mentioned that Samamish money will go to resources in 2021, when we know there will be needs but have no idea if there will be new COVID relief. And Eastside Baby Corner informed us that funding from Samamish will be used after the holiday to restock shelves for the new year. Over the past nine months, we've worked very closely with nonprofit providers, and we will be remit not to acknowledge their efforts. Their ability to navigate and to morph their working practices and service delivery so that the most vulnerable are being helped is nothing less than awe-inspiring. Their work goes a long way to creating community and connectedness. Finally, a reminder that even though City Hall is closed, thanks to technology, we are open all hours. So staff would like Council and residents to know that we are available to help and direct residents to resources as needed. And just to let everyone know that responding to resident calls and emails are our number one priority now more than ever. So with that, I welcome any questions you may have.
Okay, Council, hang on. I'm looking at the chat box.
We've got Pam in there first, followed by Kent.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah. Rita, thank you so much, and to all the staff who have been helping with this, and obviously to all of our human services providers. Really appreciate the update. You mentioned that, you know, the providers are spending all of their CARES Act funding first, that they'll be able to use our funds into next year. Were you able to find out if they believe that their projections for January, that they will have enough funding? I just want to make sure that as we land just past the holidays and into early January, that they'll have what they need, and we don't need to take any immediate-type action. I had discussed briefly with the city manager if there is any need for us to potentially give some sort of a fund that the staff could have in case there was an emergency need before we were able to approve any additional funding, especially with funds drying up and potential spikes of needs over the holidays.
Sure. That's a great question, Councilmember. So just so you know, like, you know, I've just been to many, many providers. It's really a case of them needing to spend down the CARES Act money that they've been allocated. And I think, you know, nonprofits tend to be fiscally very kind of like, you know, very lean anyway, and my sense is that they are just trying to get through to the end of the year, but they are very, very well aware that come January, a lot of them, like, those funds will have run out. So as far as actual any dire need, that hasn't been brought to my attention. And I do know that with the city manager being able to have a spending limit of up to, I believe, $50,000, that I could always go to him, and he's always been very open. So, but yes, so we haven't had anything that is absolutely like, they need help right now. But again, I think the terrain and the landscape is definitely going to have to be assessed in January to see what's happening then, and especially with the rent moratorium ending as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about, is that will suddenly, bills will start to come due, and there won't be additional funding. So please do keep, you know, I know you're on top of this. Please do keep a surprise, because it sounds like from Andrew's report, we've got more than half of our funds still available, and getting that money into these providers so that we can help the people most in need, I view as our number one priority at this point.
No, absolutely, for sure.
Councilmember Trine.
Well, first, I want to just thank the council for your foresight in, you know, just looking at these funds and knowing that we didn't know what was going to happen, and we actually made the decision to hold these funds so that we could help people in exactly the situation that we find ourselves. So thank you, Council. City Manager, I wanted to just thank you as well for, you and your staff, for all the hard work that you guys have been doing on this one. I really do appreciate it. Lot of gratitude from the council for your leadership, and I know that the citizens are benefiting from that and the agencies that are also serving them. My question, Rita, was for you as well, though, is one of the things that I'm seeing is the need for counseling or mental health counseling at this time for middle schoolers. My action research project that I did over the last two weeks in my field, which is education, and the particular population of students that I work with, I'm finding that middle schoolers are having the toughest time with COVID and not being able to go to school. I just wonder if there's something that you could, if there's something we can do as a city to help YDS or other counseling services to help target, or to, yeah, target, I'm going to call it what it is, target middle schoolers to help them manage this time. It's just a tough time for them anyway, right?
Sure.
So is there something that we can do?
Yeah, that's, again, a super valid point. We're hearing that and seeing that, too. I will say that we, the city, fund a full-time counselor now at Cross Path Counseling, and we really try to message out, as well as counseling, they actually give some part of their week to an assessment and referral service. So they have really targeted schools and PTAs and other counseling services to let them know. And so any resident in Samamish, like a youth or a teen, can call up their number, and even if Cross Path can't see them, they will have like a full intake questionnaire, and then will have a soft handoff to another counselor that can see them as well. So they've done, Sarah DeCal, the clinical director, has done a lot of outreach to try and push that service, and I know Communications has also pushed that out to residents, too. too.
Thank you, Rita.
Sure.
Councilmember Gambler.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Rita, for the update. It was pretty sobering. Hey, I just wanted to take this quick moment to basically do a shout out to the city manager, and also to our Mamish emergency manager, Andrew Stevens. They came up with this excellent strategy to allow us to have retained some of these emergency funds into next year, that will allow the city to continue to help these nonprofits even after their CARES Act funds expire. So I know they got some pushback on this. Turns out to be an excellent strategy, that we can help after their CARES Act runs out, we can continue to help fund them. So thank you for them, you both for that.
I want to say the exact same thing that Councilmember Gambler said. Is there anybody else with questions? Thank you, Rita.
No problem. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have public comment. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual city council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comments will be accepted until 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your, your written comments by email to thecityclerk@samamish.us and the citycouncil@citycouncil@samamish.us. Verbal comment. Verbal comment, up to three minutes of verbal comment, may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by 6:30 PM the day of the meeting. The phone number 1-571-317-3122. The access code of 929-348-197. Once you have joined, you will be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute when it is your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say, "Unmuted." When that occurs, the operator will ask you to begin your comment. Do, Rita, do we have public comment this evening?
Madam Mayor, I see that we have two people who have called in to provide public comment tonight.
Excellent.
I will unmute callers in the order that they have joined the meeting. When it's your turn, you will hear an automated voice say, "Unmuted," and then you will have three minutes to provide comment. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city that you live in, for the record. I will now unmute the first caller. Caller number one, could you say your name and your city?
Yes, this is Jan Bird. I live in Mamish, Washington. I'd like to comment tonight on the Mobility and Land Use Analysis, EIS, and the BERC Consulting contract. On it, amendment number two talks about reassigning funds to support refining the pre-screening Task 4 G2, which will lead to the new alternative. This particular item is for high-level mitigation strategy screening, which are transportation mitigation strategies to identify changes with travel demand and traffic volumes with each strategy. So it appears that the new alternatives are all tied to transportation levels of service and its effect on land use. But the current standards that were adopted, they didn't support the land use in the comprehensive plan. The city can set any level of service it wants to. It's an arbitrary discretionary, but first, we should be determining comprehensive growth aims that provide the most added value to the community, and then set the level of service of standards accordingly. So this approach appears to be a little bit backwards, because a lot of cities look at the people's needs first, and then they set up the concurrency to meet those needs. But it appears from the contract proposal, cities trying to reverse engineer and make the land use fit into the concurrency that they're looking for. But as you've heard me and others say multiple times, we do have a housing imbalance with residents who are not being served with the smaller, different, and diverse housing, and also the commercial development we need and want. I think most agree, we don't need much more development here, but we do need some targeted areas, like housing for all stages of life, not just 25 to 55 years of age. We need housing for various situations, like more barrier-free housing for individuals with disabilities, some smaller, lower price point housing for those who maybe are going through divorce, have a lower paying professional job, know anyone who has lower income. And I think most would agree, we really need a hardware store. So back in July 2020, when you asked for the scoping comments, apparently there were about 53 unique commenters, and housing diversity had the support of about 35 of the commenters. Now, the items the city added to the scope as a result of this request, they had zero to four comments each, but nothing was added to represent 35 commenters who supported housing diversity. I mean, just nothing. So people in council are here to represent the entire community. They may have their base, but they need to respond to the larger group. So I ask again, when we go through this process of reviewing the comprehensive plan, we get the information we don't have, which is the gap between what housing is needed, what's currently provided, and the single-family build-out capacity. What are the resulting options as a result of this? What are the pros and cons of each of them? This needs to be obtained first, before you make changes to housing and land use policies in the comprehensive plan, instead of the concurrency. So why would we not want to get accurate information first, represents, I'm getting Rita lined up, the entire community? When the mayor spoke in October to our senior groups, they--
I have to ask you to finish that thought?
Finishing up. Well, I am one of those 8,500 Mamish residents over age 60. I'm telling you what I want. I don't feel like I'm really being heard, so I'm asking to expand the scope of the EIS-related studies to include optimizing housing supplies, economic services, and transportation systems, as outlined in numerous written comments the city has received this year at your council meeting--
Okay, we're going to have to get finished.
--and bring the EIS field in period. I am John.
Okay, thank you.
I will now unmute caller number two. Hello, caller number two? Please state your name and the city you live in. Caller number two?
Sorry, I was on mute. I apologize. Yes, my name is Aurora Merchant, and I live here in the city of Mamish, Myabas 19720, Northeast, 32nd Place, Mamish, Washington. Just to give you an idea, I'm just live near the conservancy zone, or across the street from the conservancy zone, near Weber Point. The reason, I am actually calling for both, do you want to make public comment in regards to the, some of the public hearings, or the public information, as well as that I wanted to make, issue, or question that I had in regards to the checks and balances between the agencies that are governing and granting building permits? One has to do with zoning, in that zoning, the laws do not reflect a legal description differentiating the importance of an R1 versus R4, and do not match land clearly identified as R1 under the definitions provided in the Mamish Municipal Code. City staff, including senior management, has stated this can only be fixed by the city council, despite the laws outlining the requirements already being in place and the conditions need to be recognized. This can easily be seen and demonstrated by looking at the definition of what the conservancy zone as designated on the shoreline is, and what those, what would it take to meet that, and then what it also takes to make R1 zoning. The other is permit integration, and this has to do with land use permits are needed for the permission, and, and with guidance of the laws over land designated under different environmental designations and zoning density. To obtain, obtain, and that, that allow land to be built on or under specific conditions that follow the land. Building permits govern the structure built on the land, but are granted without any proof that the applicants have obtained any or all of the other necessary permits prior to building, which includes land use permits approved through the community department of the city of Mamish, or the recommendations, as well as the permits from the state or federal agencies included, that are required for the project to be approved. The current building permits state, at the bottom, the individuals are required to obtain necessary permits and follow laws, but no proof is required apart from the issuing of a building permit. The city does not even integrate the land use permit conditions into the building permit that outlines the limitations of how the land can be used. This includes the size of the structure, the setbacks, mitigation measures, and other constraints agreed upon to gain the permission to build what was presented to gain the land use permit that would not be allowed without a variance from the S and C. This places an undue liability on the city, because once the property is built, outside of the limits set forth by the city staff-- Sorry. Set forth by the city staff--
I'm going to have to ask you to finish your thought?
Okay. And that's, right now, you guys are essentially making land use permits that are going to be issued, but nothing is actually being forced to be followed. If you look at the, the four parcels, I'm not referring to one parcel, as mentioned in the last hearing, I'm actually going at four parcels that were all approved within the shoreline conservancy designation, right next to my, next to my home, where--
Okay, please finish your, please finish your thought.
The water is now coming in, and I don't believe the shoreline is even where the setbacks are going to, are going to fall. That means I will have to contact the Department of Ecology in order to get it enforced. The city does not have enforcement measures.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, caller number two. And that concludes the public comment for tonight. I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, we need to make sure that we've had David Pyle reach out to her. Okay, I want to thank the callers for calling in this evening, and we want to make sure that we've had--
I talked to the caller.
Great, okay. Okay, the next up is consent calendar. So I am looking for a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
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 Great. Seven zero. Excellent. Okay. Next up is unfinished business. We have the approval contract moment to develop the EIS, and I'm going to, who's going to cover that?
I'll take care of that, Mayor. This is Jeff Alakish, Public Works Director.
Okay, hi, Jeff.
Hey, hello. To the city manager and members of the city council, before you tonight is a contract amendment related to alternatives to the EIS for land use and transportation measures meant to better manage growth in Mamish. Staff presentation will be made by Doug McIntyre and Lindsay Osbold. Q and A will be supported by David Pyle, Lisa Marshall, our city attorney, Deborah, our, from BERC Consulting, and myself. So with that, Doug, I'll turn it over to you and Lindsay.
Jeff, Honorable Mayor, Council, Lindsay Osbold. We're happy to be here this evening. I'd like to start by going through our consultant contract team. As was mentioned by Director Alex, we have contracted with BERC Consulting, and Deborah Monkberg is on the line with us this evening. There you go, you can see the slide now. So BERC Consulting is our main consultant, and they're supported by Transportation Solutions, The Watershed Company, and HWA Geotechnical Analysis, Geosciences, Inc. So before you this evening, we have three segments of the presentation, the first being the scope. And what is before you is a total of, proposal of four alternatives that will be looked at and studied. Two of these are new alternatives that are being added with this contract amendment, and because of these additional alternatives, it will require additional work, time analysis, leading up to a draft environmental impact statement, or known as the DEIS, and then going through the process, which we will walk you through a little bit later in this presentation, leading to the development of the final environmental impact statement, or the final EIS. All of these alternatives that will be considered and studied are to manage and address trip generation through the city. Next slide, please. Next, we'd like to go over the timeline a bit with you. We have two slides in regards to the timeline. This first one is showing what has been accomplished to date. So this work effort began with the Growth Management Hearing Board's final decision and order that was issued in mid-April of this year. The following day, on April 21st, a ordinance was passed to adopt a six-month moratorium. After that, council approved a contract with BERC Consulting in the middle of May. BERC began working with staff and doing the CIPA review necessary for the work in regards to transportation and concurrency, and issued a combined CIPA DS, or Determination of Significance and Scoping, Notice of Scoping. That occurred in early July. Then at the end of July, a new ordinance was adopted for a new six-month moratorium. And in August, at the end of August, the scoping report was issued, after the scoping notice had been issued and public comment had been received. Going through those comments and the issuance of that scoping report, then at the end of September, a pause and augmentation was put in place on how to move forward with our approach, based on the Growth Measurement Hearing Board FDO that was issued earlier this year. Next slide. So that brings us to this evening. This evening, we're asking for council action on this third contract amendment. If council approves this contract amendment, we then will be moving forward over the next few months to finalize the four alternatives and work with the consultant team on the preparation of the preliminary draft environmental impact statement. You'll notice in blue text on this slide that we will be issuing a revised scoping notice towards the end of January, or sometime in February of 2021, to incorporate what these other alternatives are, and to also outline the process of how the public can be involved moving forward. This revised scoping notice will not have a comment period on it. We anticipate that the preliminary draft EIS will be complete for city staff review at the end of March. Over the next several weeks, city staff will review and work with the consultant team on necessary revisions, so that we can have a final, or a draft EIS that is ready for public review and issue that towards the beginning of May of 2021. That issuance date will also begin the public comment period, which will be open for 30 days, ending on June 14th of 2021. At the closure of that public comment period, staff and the consultant team will work on reviewing and responding to public comment, and working towards preparation of the preliminary final environmental impact statement. It's anticipated that that document will be complete towards the end of August of 2021, and again, we'll go through a city staff and consultant review and revision cycle, leading up to the issuance of the final environmental impact statement, which is anticipated to occur on October 11th of 2021. At that time, there is a seven-day waiting period prior to any action being taken by council on that final environmental impact statement. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Doug to discuss the budget request.
Thank you, Lindsay. This is Doug McIntyre, transportation planner in the Public Works Department. Good evening, Mayor Moran and members of the city council. A main component of the contract amendment before council tonight is a budget request totaling $240,894. The breakdown of that request is $218,894 for the analysis of the new alternatives and related work for the EIS. There's also a 10%, roughly 10%-- There's also a 10%, roughly 10% contingency on the request, and that amounts to $22,000. An important note about the contingency is that it will only be accessed upon prior authorization by the city manager. One thing we wanted to provide council with tonight is a broader overview of the total project budget, as this has gone through a couple of different contract amendments. As you can see in the red box, the contract amendment request before council tonight is the $240,894. Below the red box is the existing budget, which is actually made up of the original contract amount plus the contract amendments that have been prior authorized. That amount is $284,476. Included in that was also an approved contingency request of $65,000. Therefore, the total amount for this project is $590,370. We know that there was a desire to kind of get a broader sense of the EIS process, so we're going to end this presentation with a really high-level overview of what it takes to develop an EIS and get it issued and allow for decision-making following the issuance. So before I get into some of these milestones, just want to note that a lot of these dates and timelines and milestones come from the SEPA rules and the state law for SEPA. So some of these can't move, other parts of this process are a little bit more flexible, and I'll get into that in a second. So the EIS process essentially begins with the lead agency, which could be the city, or it could be, say, a school district, or another agency that can, as designated in the SEPA rules, make determinations of significance on projects. So in our case, we are the lead agency. So the process begins with the lead agency making a determination of significance, which is called a DS. That kickstarts a 21-day scoping period. That is a part of the law. It is, you cannot be fewer than 21 days. At the end of the 21 days, and collecting public comment during those 21 days, the lead agency issues a, what's called a scoping report. For our process, back in August, we released our scoping report on the EIS we're currently discussing. Once the scoping report is issued, it kickstarts a process for finalizing the alternatives and then doing really the technical analysis needed for review of the alternatives. That work then goes into the preparation of what we call the preliminary draft EIS. That process takes, it can take a little bit longer, a little bit less, but approximately 168 days. That process culminates then in the issuance of the draft EIS. That is a major milestone in the process, and after the issuance of the draft EIS, it kickstarts either a 30- or 45-day comment period where the public will review and comment to the city or lead agency on the technical analysis contained in the draft EIS. Once that comment period closes, the lead agency then reviews comments and responds to all comments. Those responses are then included in the final EIS. The final EIS, also known as the FDIS, is sort of the final stage in the process, and at that point, the lead agency identifies a preferred alternative out of the alternatives analyzed. This process can take approximately 120 days, and it culminates in the issuance of the final EIS. And as Lindsay identified in one of the earlier slides, after the issuance of a final EIS, there is a required seven-day waiting period where no decisions can be made. Following that seven-day period, though, in this case, our city council will consider the proposal. So all said, that process can take upwards of 318 days after the issuance of the scoping report. So with that, we will open it up for questions, and thank you very much.
Okay, council, I know we're going to.
Here looks like we got Councilmember Treen, who's their first, followed by Councilmember Stewart.
Yep. I think what we're going to do is, I think everybody's going to have questions. So seeing that Councilmember Treen is first in the box, we're going to start with you, and we're going to do round robin. So Councilmember Treen.
Madam Mayor, fellow council members, I would actually, what I would rather do is make a motion and speak to my motion so that it's pretty clear why we should move forward with the Burke contract. So the motion that.
Can we get questions answered first before we dive in?
Madam Mayor, can we have the questions asked later?
Yep, we can answer them after your motion is made.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the council, I move that the council approve a contract amending amendment with Burke Consulting to perform the task related to EIS, Preparation and Comprehensive Plan, and Municipal Code Amendments for the Balanced Land Use and Mobility Analysis Effort. Second. May I speak to my motion, please?
Absolutely.
Well, I'll just say this, there's no power greater than a community discovering what it cares about. What I've found in this community is that we care about our city, we care about our character, and we care about our environment. We were elected for the public that's listening. You elected us as a council to act on land use. We hired the city manager, and the majority of our staff have been working diligently on this very issue of land use. So that's why we're moving forward. I have a lot of things I could say about the actual first seven items on the EIS, but what I really want to get you to, to save the time, is down to number 8A, which is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment that will follow this EIS, because that's where the cost of the money is. So when I look at it, for us to do amendments to our comprehensive plan to move the city forward in the direction that would meet our vision, which is that Sammamish is a vibrant brethren community blessed with a well-preserved natural environment, a family-friendly, kid-safe culture, unrevealed connectedness, from its expanded tree canopy to its peaceful neighborhoods. And I'll just stop right there for right now and just let you know that one of the things that we look at is land use. And so for my Burke consultant who's sitting in the audience, there are several things that we need to look at in our comprehensive plan and make changes so that those goals of our vision can be met. And so I ask that you look at goal under land use, goal LU.3, that you would also look at goal LU.6, that there needs to be some implementation tool for that one, that you'd also consider looking at LU.5 and give it some definition and meaning. On the policy side, under land use, I've spent a lot of time on stormwater, and so underneath policy LU.1.4, there is a list of goals and policies that needs to be addressed and answered. I could continue to move forward throughout this because I have about 17 just in land use of things that should be looked at, removed, revised, or give definition as to what it means. So definitions need to be provided, and that is just in the land use section of our comprehensive plan. When we move to in the environment, the last goal in our environment section of our comprehensive plan is maintain and improve the city's forested character. That should be number one. That's why people live in Sammamish. So if you think that we should be doing anything besides that, the reason, and here's the reason why, we've had three-year-olds, 13-year-olds, and I've had other teenagers email me and ask me to speak on the wildlife and the animals. Where do they live? They live in a forest. So if you're against the wildlife, then this isn't something we should be pushing forward. But if you're for wildlife in our city and the character that we have because of the mammals, the animals and the birds that live here, and the trees and all of their habitat and environment, then I can understand why you would disagree with why we should move forward. But if you're for that, I see why. I'll just move housing next because I'll just let you know, I have a list of other comments there, but I'll just move to housing, because housing is an issue. And I'm hoping that when we look at this land use, that we look at what is the plan for the future of the city and what is going to be built when we're built out, and then look at our elements here, our goals, and we need to actually revise, you should look at goals, this is for the Burke consultant, goals H1, H3, H5. If we move forward into, oh my, here we go, into the policies, policies H28, policies H210, policies H212. And we should give some definition to what it means to encourage and support nonprofit agencies and how we can go about doing that. Transportation, moving to the next element of our. Look, you guys are starting to get the idea, right? I can continue to go on, but the need for us to do this and get to, through the EIS, and then move to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment so that we could get predictable outcomes that are being built on the ground, right? Then if we don't do that, then we're doing a disservice to the residents of Sammamish. Enough said. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Treen. Okay, we're going to do round robin, and next is Councilmember Stewart.
Great, thank you. I think it's really important that we make sure that we're explaining to the public what's really going on here. So I would really appreciate it if the staff could take a moment and explain to the public, first of all, what an EIS is. And if we are no longer doing this EIS in response to the Growth Management Hearing Board remand, then what is the goal of doing this? And then I have another list of questions, but if we could do that one first, because Councilmember Treen brings up a lot of, you know, he has a lot of input and feedback, and that's all well and good, but I'm not sure that anyone in the public understood what his feedback was for and what that means. And so I just want to make sure that for those who are watching, they understand what's going on. I would also love it if, as we're explaining what the EIS is, what the goal of doing this EIS is now that it's not for the Growth Management Hearing Board remand, can we also walk the public through what the four alternatives are? So could we start with those, answering those questions?
I guess what I'd like to do is see if David Pyle would start with the question on the EIS, and then we'll see how we can answer the secondary question. Mr. Pyle, are you available?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Council, David Pyle, Community Development. So the question regarding what is an EIS? An EIS is not a permit, it's not an approval, it's not an action in itself. An environmental impact statement is really best described as a disclosure document. It's a disclosure document regarding potential impacts that could occur resultant from an action that a decision-making body is considering taking. So if a decision-making body is proposing to amend the comprehensive plan, amend the development regulations, and that there is, through the State Environmental Policy Act process, identified to be a potential significant impact associated with that process, and with that change to the comp plan or the development regs, then that agency should go through the process of completing an environmental impact statement, which studies the potential impacts to a range of environmental elements. The elements of the environment are listed in the state law, they're required to be covered under SEPA review. Air, earth, water, for example, are considered elements of the environment. Housing is an element of the environment. So these are all items that are reviewed as part of an environmental impact statement and action. One other really important component to an environmental impact statement is the range of reasonable approximate alternatives to the action that is proposed. So if there is an action and there are alternatives that could be taken, it's up to the party performing the analysis to help decision-makers understand how the action that might result stacks up or compares to other actions that are reasonably comparable that might result in the same outcome. I hope that helps to describe it. SEPA in itself is a little bit abstract, so that was my attempt. The State Department of Ecology has a great website on SEPA and on environmental impact statements, and there is quite a bit of guidance around what to expect in an environmental impact statement, what the steps are, what type of resources go into it. So I'd recommend anybody listening out there in the audience who's interested to learn more about a State Environmental Policy Act, environmental impact statement, to go to the Washington State Department of Ecology website and look up SEPA or State Environmental Policy Act, and then look through the information that's offered there specifically related to environmental impact statements.
David, that was incredibly helpful. Could you, again, for the public, let them know what decision is being considered that we are assessing the potential impacts for? Because if I understood, your description is that we do an environmental impact assessment to understand what the potential impacts are for a decision that's being considered. So what decision is being considered?
Adoption of the volume-over-capacity methodology for inclusion in the city's comprehensive plan and development regulations as a tool to manage traffic in the city.
Great. And then the alternatives that are being considered for this adoption, because I heard Councilmember Treen jumping ahead to, we need to go in and we need to change our, all these policies in our comprehensive plan, again, based on the SEPA oversee. So again, I just want to be able to walk the public through kind of what the steps really are. So we have this potential decision being made, which is, should we adopt a SEPA oversee concurrency methodology? And if we did that, we're going to assess the environmental impacts of that decision, and then we're looking at alternatives to that. So can you walk us through what those alternatives are that are being considered?
So I will actually defer back to Jeff for that, and he might ask one of the members of the team to present those to you based on who is best suited to do so.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart, I'm going to have Doug take a stab at highlighting the four areas that we're contemplating in the scope of work, and we may also turn to Deborah, our consultant. But Doug, you want to take a quick stab at that?
Sure, I can do that. So this is Doug McIntyre, Transportation Planner again. So while we haven't finalized all of the alternatives we're looking at, we're still doing that legwork to get the alternatives firmed up. As Lindsay had mentioned earlier, all of them do relate to managing trip generation throughout the city. So in the EIS process, which David described very well, thank you, David, in the EIS process, you always start with a no-action alternative. So in that case, alternative one for this proposal is to not pursue the policy amendment that David had mentioned. And then the alternative two is usually the proposal. So in this case, again, to reiterate what David said, it's the adoption of the volume-over-capacity concurrency methodology for Sammamish. In our pursuit of building all four alternatives, we're still, again, looking at some pre-screening, some pre-modeling that our transportation consultant is working on to finalize alternative three, but. three. But suffice it to say that alternatives three and four look at alternative methods of achieving the desired outcomes of managing traffic in a much more comprehensive and direct way in addition to including land use as part of that analysis. So again, without getting into too much detail because we don't have everything firmed up yet, I think that's probably, you know, enough to continue the conversation without prematurely getting into alternatives that are not finalized yet.
Well, if we're talking about authorizing, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars more, shouldn't we have some details about what those alternatives are so the public understands what we're spending another three hundred and some odd thousand dollars on?
Yeah, and actually, I don't know, Lisa Marshall, I might defer that question to you.
Yeah, Councilmember Stewart, the purpose of the budget amendment is to allow the Burke and our other consultants to move forward with finalizing the alternatives. It would be too premature for us to tell you exactly what they are tonight because we don't know exactly what they are. We know within some parameters what they are, and that was very well described by Doug. So, you know, we're not done with this process yet, and until we're done, we need to do more work. And after we're done with this work, we will come to you and say, these are your alternatives. Please choose one. But we're not there yet.
Excellent. And Lisa, I don't know if it's you or Doug, can we address the concerns raised by a number of public comment we received, an email as well as Jan Burd who called in today, which is that during the original comment period, we did have a preponderance of the feedback was asking for a particular consideration of looking at the needs of the current residents within the city and looking for some of that. Is that being considered as part of this alternative, and if not, why not?
Well, again, there's more than one alternative, and as somebody, I think, mentioned earlier, this is a gen bill. We did kind of reach a point around September, the end of September, where we realized we needed to expand our scope and look in a much broader fashion than we had in the past. And when we did that, we'd already, I believe, collected the initial comments from the initial scoping period. But what will happen going forward is that we'll have another opportunity for public comment when we issue a preliminary draft EIS and then the draft EIS. Doug, is that accurate?
Yeah, but that's not exactly what I asked. So what I asked was for the comments that we've already received, we had a supermajority of those were asking for an alternative to be considered to look at the housing needs of those people who already live in our community and making sure that we are addressing where we may have some needs not being met. Are those comments being considered in these alternatives?
Yes.
So we should see them addressed. So at least one of these alternatives will look at that, addressing those housing needs.
Well, Councilmember Stewart, I'm not sure if I know exactly which comments you're referring to, but it sounds like you're kind of putting a category of comment together, which is housing needs for certain demographics within the community. I can certainly say that that analysis is part of a couple of these alternatives that in fact look at land use in addition to mobility.
Okay, so we're going to make sure that we're looking at that diversity of housing, which is what a preponderance of the comments we're asking for.
I think it's fair to say we will be looking at diversity of housing. Doug, is there anything you'd like to add to, or David?
Housing is absolutely part of the analysis being done. There is, in the comment period, there were, as Councilmember Stewart mentioned, a lot of comments about housing. But yes, the analysis about housing is part of the analysis of the EIS, is included in the EIS. Sorry, I wondered if I phrased that.
Great, thank you for that. Just a couple more questions. One question I have is, why won't there be a public comment period once the revised scoping has been put out? Why wouldn't we want to hear from the public to make sure that they feel like the revised scope meets their needs?
This is David Pyle, happy to take this one. So in my experience with environmental impact statements, really the point where, and this is a good point for the public to hear also, because if they're listening, I think it's helpful to understand the EIS process, the best point in time for the public to engage is on the draft environmental impact statement. Typically with scoping, what we're looking for is whether we missed anything. Under CEPA rules, the agency is not required to nor obligated to respond to comments received on scoping. Scoping is really, you're probing the environment. You're trying to understand what issues people are raising. You're not necessarily doing an analysis of each of the issues people are raising. You're gaining an understanding of whether that comment has bearing on the issue at hand. You then make a decision to incorporate comments related to scoping into the scope. The scope could be revised per the CEPA rules, as we're doing here. Then the agency that is performing the EIS review goes through the process of generating a draft environmental impact statement. That then is issued, and then there's a fairly extensive comment collection and comment response process that occurs with the draft environmental impact statement. Per CEPA rules, we are required to respond to comments received. There does need to be some analysis related to the comments as part of the DEIS point in the process. So I just want to be clear that just because someone's comment was not directly included in the scoping report, or because someone's comment was not responded to as part of scoping, does not mean they've lost their chance or their voice in the EIS process. The EIS process is really designed to give someone a voice at the point where the draft analysis regarding potential impacts is issued, and that's reflected in state law. That then follows, with the DEIS, we follow with an FDIS. The FDIS includes response to comment, revisions to analysis, et cetera. So I hope that helps explain where the bulk of the work occurs and where the CEPA rules, which are not the city's rules, these are state rules, really directs people to participate in the process.
Terrific, that's great. I think it's really important that we're clear. This is a big project, and it's complicated, and I know you pointed us to some websites, but I'm not sure how many people will go out and dive that deep. So it's great, I think, to give the public an overview. Since it's been brought up that a lot of this could lead to a change in our land use, and I think that's where the concerns come back to the housing, I just want to reiterate that we did get a lot of public comment tonight for the meeting in email where people have expressed a concern to make sure that as part of this, we aren't just doing traffic modeling, but that we're making sure we're understanding what the housing needs are. Is that going to be part of, is there going to be some sort of a needs analysis? Or do we have data to understand that in addition to just traffic modeling alternatives? If in fact, the traffic modeling alternatives could lead to changes in land use, which would affect the types of housing that we may provide to the people who already live here?
Councilmember Stewart and the rest of the council, I don't know if we can predetermine what that scope and how dense or how broad all of that information will be. We need to keep in mind the scope, the analysis, and the time of what we are trying to accomplish, and gathering all of this information is very important. And we also are keeping in mind what we're trying to accomplish here and that we are still at the forefront of the next comprehensive plan update. And so what we may gather is that we have a tremendous amount of additional work to do as we prepare for that next phase of the comprehensive plan update.
So I'm sorry, I appreciate that, Mr. City Manager, that's great, but I didn't hear an answer to my question, which is, as we're looking at and we're approving more money to do more traffic modeling, are we also making sure if the outcome of this is to potentially change land use policies, which is what I heard Councilmember Trean say, then are we making sure that as an input to this, we're looking at the needs of our community, the housing needs of the people who already live here?
I don't think we can answer that question at this point in time.
But that's not part of the information you're going to be gathering to make a determination on this? You're not going to be doing some sort of a needs analysis with our community in terms of what the housing needs are?
Housing is a component of what we'll be looking at.
Understood. So will we be doing an assessment of what the needs are of the community in terms of housing as part of the input to this?
I can jump in and answer. So this is Doug McIntyre. The housing analysis being done in the EIS is responding to the proposal, alternative two, if you recall from my earlier commentary. So it is more targeted to the proposal. That is what the EIS analysis is for. The more broad and maybe deeper needs assessment that has been discussed tonight is probably more in line with something, a comprehensive plan update. So all of the analysis being done for the EIS is directly related to the proposal.
Okay. And then as we come out of this, on the other end, if there are proposed changes to our comprehensive plan in terms of our land use, how will those, will we make sure that those continue to stay aligned with the countywide planning policies, especially those that, if I look at the timeline, the new countywide planning policies will have been approved by the time we have results from this effort? And so are we making sure that we are going to be aligned with those countywide planning policies, again, particularly when it comes to land use and housing? And even transportation, that those are all big parts of the countywide planning policies? Because it's my understanding that our comprehensive plan needs to be aligned with those countywide planning policies. So how do we make sure that those are, that whatever is proposed is aligned with those countywide planning policies?
I'll defer to David Pyle on this one.
So that would be through the next comprehensive plan update. So this process is a step towards the next comprehensive plan update. I'll call it sort of an interim step. Not necessarily an interim comp plan, but it's kind of like stepping up a ladder to a point where we're going to have, we have a much bigger lift ahead of us, starting actually next year, where we're going to ramp up efforts on our comp plan update, which is required to be done by 2024. Doesn't mean you can't finish it early, but that is the process that we're directed to follow. So typically, you know, most cities follow the CPP updates, and then they go ahead and update their comp plans. That doesn't mean that they are noncompliant or out of sync or not in alignment with the CPPs. You might find, for example, that if the countywide planning policies are updated by the county, that any city, none in particular, but any city, might be out of alignment with those policies as a result of those updates. That city has been obligated as part of its comprehensive plan update to bring it into alignment. So just because a change is made at the CPP level does not mean that we immediately need to take action to bring our comp plan into alignment. That has to happen through the process that's dictated by the state.
Yeah, and I wasn't implying that. I was more implying that if we are, what it looks like, and what I heard Councilmember Trean say, is that we are driving, that this EIS is going to drive us to updating our comprehensive plan in the areas of transportation and land use and other areas. And so if, in fact, we are going to be driving towards what sounds like, you know, impacting a lot of updates in our comprehensive plan, are we going to try to align those with the countywide planning policies that will be approved at the same time?
So that's up to the council. What the EIS is, is an analysis of where there might be policies that are out of alignment, right? It's not, the EIS is not a solution. The EIS is an analysis around what the impacts might be of taking certain actions.
Okay. So can you help me understand what, so Councilmember Trean kind of went through the comprehensive plan and said, hey, go look at all of these policies in our comprehensive plan. So how does that factor into this effort that's going on here?
So I won't answer that for Councilmember Trean. I'd want to hear from him on that. However, my understanding is that Councilmember Trean has a much broader interest in the comp plan and how the comp plan plays out in providing a quality of life for all the citizens of Sumamish. And Councilmember Trean, based on communications that he, or discussions that I've had with him dating back to prior to his election to council regarding our comp plan, are that he really is interested in making sure that we have the proper balance of housing, of transportation infrastructure, of natural resource protections and managements, as I do understand all the council members to have that same interest.
Right. I just want to understand, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I think one thing that all of the council members appear to be in alignment on is providing a quality of life for Sumamish citizens that they deserve. So I applaud you all for that. It's a really challenging task because we have some challenges ahead of us here.
Yeah. And I just want to make sure, because I feel like the EIS process is supposed to take in a lot of data and consider the impacts and then come up with some potential, you know, either impacts or changes we can make. And I just want to make sure that we don't have, that we're, one, that we're collecting all the data, right? Because, you know, I think transportation alternatives are important, and I do think that they go hand in hand with our land use and the types of housing that we build. And certainly, you know, we've had many discussions over the years, and we'll have many more, I'm sure, around, you know, how do we make sure that we're building the types of housing and the types of transportation infrastructure to reduce the number of car trips that anybody needs to take? Because that's just better for everybody in terms of sustainability and climate change and greenhouse gas reductions, as well as driving down, you know, costs for people. Automobiles are now the third high, the second or third highest household expense. So there's all sorts of things we can look at that would improve the quality of life of people and protect our environment and do all of that. But I want to make sure that we have all of the, that we're taking in all of that data and we're not jumping to any, I'm sorry, what was that?
Point of order, please.
Make your point.
On the onset of discussion, we were focused on questions first. Can we stay on that script? That's my point of order.
No, we're discussing, we, Councilmember Trean made a motion, so we weren't able to ask all our questions first.
And point of order, you've exceeded your three minutes.
Okay, so let's stay focused on questions, and yes, we do need to try to move on to other people's questions. So Councilmember Stewart, have you asked one more question, and we are going to continue on to make sure that we get the other council members rolling here on some questions?
Madam Mayor, I'm fine with that. I would just ask that the rules be applied consistently. I don't think anyone interrupted Councilmember Trean, and he had a lot of detailed information, which I think was great that he was able to share with everyone. Okay, I will, as usual, I will get cut short. I would just ask then that we do make sure that we are collecting all of the information. It's not clear to me in this contract amendment that we are, in fact, going to be looking at all of the data. And I think even the caller pointed out that we're only looking at, you know, doing additional modeling on the transportation pieces, and we're not necessarily looking at those housing needs. And I do think that as we look at quality of life and making sure that we address the needs of all of the community, that we need to look at what those needs are, and that if we really want to meet the needs of the entire community and do it in an environmentally sustainable way, we do have to look at that whole picture and not just at trip generation. My last question.
My last question is, how, how is Burke going to take into consideration the potential changes to traffic and transportation that will come about based on what's happened with the pandemic and the changes in the working from home for many of the region's largest employers like Amazon and Microsoft and Facebook, as well as Boeing, even King County as an employer? So how will those changes be incorporated in what we're, we're looking at here?
Doug, would you like to take that one?
Yeah, I can take that. This is Doug. So that is a great point, Councilmember Stewart. We are obviously aware of the impacts to the transportation system based on the wide-scale work from home that's happening right now. In response to that, we have asked our transportation consultant to conduct traffic counts at all entry and exit points to the city. So that will give us a solid baseline of understanding of what has happened because we do annual traffic counts, as the council knows. We do those on an annual basis to get a sense of the baseline just in a typical year. So using that data, we want to compare that to what's happening today. So yes, we have following, following the council's decision on this contract amendment because it is, is part of the budget request before council tonight. If it's approved tonight, we will then have our transportation consultant go forward on that relatively soon.
Okay. And if I can just offer one last thing is, I think it would be really helpful to reach out to the region's employers and understand what their plans are longer term in terms of, should we say, flexibility in people's work arrangements and will, do they foresee that being a long-term, even post-pandemic option for employees to understand if this, if these changes will be something that will last well beyond the pandemic?
And if I could add as the closing, one of the things that the team has discussed and the reason that we do have a contingency is we may explore the possibility of a, of a valid survey of sorts to help us guide us based on what you just mentioned, Councilmember Stewart. So we have the ability and the flexibility to take a look at some additional data based on doing a potential survey of the community about the issues you just talked about. So thank you for that.
Okay, thanks so much.
Okay, Councilmember Ross.
I support the funding. In particular, we had to, as we progressed through the process and we're trying to meet some of the deliverables aligned with the growth management hearings board, we found that our scope wasn't broad enough and I think the addition of the new major transportation and land use is critical. The worst thing we could do is come at the end and even spend half of what we're asking for and come to the conclusion that we have to modify the level of service downward to meet the plan and, and the updated comp plan. So I think it's just critical effort, critical planning effort and consulting work, so I, I fully support it. If I don't have questions, I apologize. I didn't want to, I'm ending my time completely right now.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I just had two questions for the staff regarding, I guess overarchingly, have we done one of these before? And I don't think we have. And I'm curious as to, that's the first question, have we done one of these before on such a scale?
David Pyle, would you know this?
I am not aware of the history of environmental impact statements in the city of Samamish. However, I have participated in these fairly large ones, regional ones, in my past employer. And I also know that Burke is regarded as one of the, regarded as in the highest esteem with regard as consultants that perform CIPA and EIS work. So we're very lucky to have them onboard as a consultant supporting this effort. They have been through many EISs over the years and I think if you were to talk to different cities, different, different government agencies, you would quickly find that Burke has been, been, I guess, one of the leaders in EIS work. So just wanted to put that in there, out there for your consideration.
No, I appreciate that. I guess my, my overarching concern or question or statement or whatever we're trying to do here is, i- if we haven't done one before, I support doing one now. I support doing one on a larger scale or more comprehensive scale than what was at least presented, at least as far as I can tell, previously. Now, there's been some interesting comments tonight from staff that made me optimistic and frankly, I'm, if that's carried through, I'm supportive of this. What it appeared what we were doing going into this, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong and that's cool if I am, I'm happy to be wrong all day long, it leads to a good result and comprehensive information, is that we were trying to do this in, in a reaction to a judicial hearing or a direction from a, from the, the growth management hearings board regarding Jaren matter. And I, my read of it is that they are not asking us to do that, that this is not a requirement of us to do this, that this is a, if we want to include the V over C in our comprehensive plan, then we should do it in a way that is reflective of an overarching EIS review that gives us a more in-depth information. And that's cool, you know, whether you support the V over C and the comprehensive plan or not, that's, that's a different conversation. But my, my hope, and I, again, I think I heard that from some of the comments from staff today, that the information that we're trying to get from an EIS is broad and it is a large, like a, a large-scale review of housing, of traffic, of environment and as it applies to housing and environment as it applies to traffic. And, you know, to me, that's a really reasonable, positive thing to do. But I guess my, my overarching concern is why now? And if not now, when? I can, I can comprehend that, but are we taking a, a big enough grasp here of what we're trying to do? And I don't know if that's the case or not. I'll guess I'll wait to determine my support of this after I hear more and if it's worth a quarter million dollars at this time or not, I'm still kind of on the fence on that. But my, my hope is that, and I'll ask staff and specifically the city manager, if we can receive kind of, I guess, check-ins as, as we go along rather than, you know, yes, here's a quarter million dollars, yes, Burke, go on ahead. And then we hear back three or six months down the road and here's the report. I would hope that we can get status updates at, at certain specific points or at reasonable points. I don't know, whatever we can figure out so that we can maybe tweak it as we're going along. Are we getting the information that we need? Are we really just answering the question about V over C as it relates to traffic and environment? Because to me, that's not enough. I, I would want to know that we're going to get more information out of this, especially for a quarter million dollars and specifically because of the impact on development in our community and on our environment. There's a lot of other things to consider and it's just not all about traffic right now. And I've heard a couple of people bring up some of the, you know, traffic may be changed significantly in the next few years, given what we're going through right now with the pandemic. But I would hope we're going to take a bigger view and I would hope that we can get reports back as we're going along so we can tweak this potentially or have the opportunity to tweak it as we're, as we're going along with Burke. Is that possible?
Lisa, do you want to weigh in on that?
Sure. Well, the EIS process is really, as David Pyle summarized, to provide you alternatives. Well, we're happy to check in with you and provide you status. What we'd like to avoid is having the city council as a policymaker getting overly involved in the, you know, technical details of the EIS process. So happy to provide you updates. We, you will be well informed when we get to the preliminary draft EIS stage and the final EIS stage. And certainly, your role really starts when we present these alternatives to you.
All right. Thank you.
Next I have Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I support the motion of Councilmember Trine and doing this EIS and doing it in a robust manner. I'd like to thank the city manager and David Pyle and Jeff Alkis and all the staff. It's taken a load of work. This is quite a heavy lift and they've all jumped into it. So let's be clear where this EIS started from. There was an action brought against the city, the Jaren action, by an ex-mayor who's looking to basically overturn a traffic congestion tool, V over C, that was voted in by the council. As a result of that and from that, we've kind of grown this to the point where we realize that we probably don't have all the information in depth enough that we need to make these kinds of decisions. So the, we, we approved this to start with the council voted on it to get this moving. And the EIS is here to be a large measurement. It's looking at our water resources, our plants and our animals, our land use, our plans and policies, our housing, our transportation, our earth, which means geotechnical, and our utilities. The, the only question I have on this is, why wasn't this done 10 years ago? How do you develop a city, determine how a city's going to grow, where it's going to grow, what infrastructure is needed as it grows, unless you've done a robust study of all of these different indicators, our water resources, our plants and our animals? From what I understand, this is the first robust EIS that the city's done. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I understand. There, there's no downside to doing this. This allows us to have all the information that we need to make decisions as a council on what's going to be best for our residents. And our residents have spoken fairly clearly through a number of surveys on what's important to them. What keeps popping up is our trees, our wildlife, our water, our transportation, our traffic, our parks. Well, all these things, our water resources, our plants and animals, land use, all these things are being looked at on the EIS. So I, I don't see any downside to spending some money. Obviously, it's not inconsequential, but it, it's not enormous. So we need to do and have professionals put this together. And we've through, through the city manager, he's gone out and found basically the, the best environmental people, the best traffic people, the best attorney that can help us on land use. He's put all these people together and created a, a, a perfect team, a dream team, that will produce choices for the city, that, and, and data for the city that we're going to need if we're going to make these decisions going forward. You know, again, I, I shake my head and wonder that a city could be developed without this type of robust study. So again, I support this. I think it's a great idea. Again, it's a heavy lift, a load of time being spent by city staff, city managers, by the consultants, by our attorney. We're, what we're doing here is we're leveraging thousands of dollars against millions of dollars. We're looking to make decisions that involve millions and hundreds and millions of dollars for the city and we're investing some thousands of dollars to make sure that we have a robust data points, a robust set of data points that we can look at and make these decisions correctly. Now, is this going to be all encompassing with every single thing looked at? Probably not. That would take 10 years and never end. But it will give us a pretty good definition to go ahead and look at these different options and go ahead and vote to the best interest of our residents with the data and information that we need rather than just winging it. You know, that was the basis of the V over C. V over C is just a tool, just allow us to look and say, how is development impacting traffic? And what should we be looking at when we're looking at that? Well, this is that same idea. Give us the data, do the study, look at it carefully, and then as a council, we'll come together and we'll vote and we'll say, based on this great information from this group of professionals, we're going to say, we think this is the best path forward for our city. So because of that, I support Councilmember Trine's motion to go ahead and fund Burke, keep this moving. We're going in the right direction. Very proud of the council on this decision so far and are very proud of our city manager and our staff. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor.
Call the question.
Okay. I was, I, okay.
Madam Mayor, we don't, we can take a vote because I know you haven't had a chance to ask your questions. And since we skipped over questions and went straight to this discussion, I feel like everyone should have a chance to get their questions answered.
Oh, mine are most. Yeah, okay. So, all right, so we have a call for the question on the floor here. Okay, all those in favor of calling the question say aye.
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 Okay. So, huh?
Are you going to ask for opposed?
Yeah, so I'm going to ask for nays.
Nay.
Okay, so I guess it's, I guess we're calling for the question. Okay, so, and this is what I'm going to have.
What was the vote? Was that, was I the only nay?
It was six to one. So we're going to call for the question.
Yes.
Mayor, can we just take a second here? I want to refer to, back to David Pyle. He wanted to correct the record on something he said.
Oh, okay.
David?
Yeah, I just wanted to raise that the city actually has embarked on an EIS process, the town center. Although that wasn't a citywide EIS, it was specific to a geographic portion of the city. It was an environmental impact statement process that resulted ultimately in informing decision makers who took action and adopted the city's town center plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and I do have a comment I wanted to make, but we will, I'll save it for after the vote. Okay. So Deputy Mayor, would you like to state your motion?
No, I.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It was Councilmember Trine, sorry.
I move that the council approve a contract amendment with the Burke Consulting to perform tasks related to the EIS preparation and comprehensive plan and municipal code amendments for the balanced land use and mobility analysis effort.
Okay. Lita, do you want to please do a roll call on those?
Mayor Karen Moran?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malcha?
Aye.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie?
No.
Councilmember Chris Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Kent Trine?
Aye.
Okay, and my comment was for Burke or whoever is looking at this is that, I don't know if they, if this is part of the study, but to be looking at the, the inclusion of looking at the sewer and what is going on with, with what we have left, knowing that apparently we are coming to the point where we are at capacity at yet another, another one of our infrastructure needs. So I'm hoping that is also wrapped into this EIS as well.
Thank you, Member, or Mayor. We'll, we'll take note of that. Thank you.
Okay, moving on then, on the agenda. The next thing that we have is we've got the ordinance, section 20 dot 05 dot 040 of the Samamish municipal code to remove the ability to waive a submitted requirements providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Who is? and establishing an effective date. Who is covering this? I believe this is Mr. Pyle.
Mayor Moran, David Pyle, here. So tonight, for your consideration, based on requests from the council, certain council members to have this added for consideration for the council this evening is an ordinance that would amend SMC 20.05.040, item three, to eliminate director discretion regarding waiver of application materials or required application materials, and would amend that section to allow or to retain, so, let me back up, I apologize. There's two parts to section 20.05.040, item three. It allows, first of all, for the director to have discretion in requiring submittal items from applicants, or, excuse me, regarding components to site plans related to submittals by applicants. So the first part allows the director, should we find that an applicant needs to provide us some additional information in order for us to understand a project and impacts a project might have and how a project works, we can require an applicant include specific information in a site plan that is submitted as part of an application. The second part of SMC 20.05.040, item three, is discretion that's given to the director to waive submittal items that are listed in SMC 20.05.040-1, that are required submittal items for land use applications type one through four. What this proposal does, based on the initial proposal made by members of council, was is that it strikes the second half of SMC 20.05.040, item three, and eliminates the director's discretion to waive required submittal items. What staff have also included for your consideration tonight is a friendly hybrid proposed amendment that would not only amend SMC 20.05.040-3 as described, but it would also amend 20.05.040, item one, to make corrections on remnant and outdated language in the code in order to ensure that should we eliminate the director's discretion, that we are not left requiring something of an applicant that we can no longer waive, that simply is no longer part of our process or where it doesn't make sense. So staff considered the initial council member request, and we took a closer look at it. We identified where there might be some implications, and we came up with the hybrid proposal for council consideration in addition to the primary proposal.
Okay.
You're not in the chat.
Okay, I'm going through who's in the chat here. I'm trying to find the bottom of the last one here. Goodness.
So I'm Karen. I'm the first one for this item.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you. So I was the one who had asked for this, and I appreciate staff being so quick to turn this around. I did have a conversation with David Pyle relative to my original ask, and I do support option two as staff recommends, just to kind of clean up some additional language that's in that same section. So that would be my motion is to adopt option two.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. I've got Jason. Do you want to talk to your motion, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I'll do it so briefly. You know, I just wanted to, and it's not that I think that staff is allowing these workarounds, but the fact that the language exists in code does give discretion that I don't think should exist because an applicant should be required to bring everything on that list in order to be able to have a completed application.
Okay. I'm going to start with Jason, and we'll do roundtable. If you don't have any questions, just say pass.
I withdrew my motion. I withdrew. Thank you. I'm all set. I support Chrissy's motion.
Okay. So I'm going to then, Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, I think it's a good motion, and I think the input from staff is good motion. So I'll support Councilmember Mauchal's motion, or actually Deputy Mayor Mauchal's motion. Thank you.
Okay, so Councilmember Trean.
So I think I understand this correctly when I read it for the second time. So on the outdated citation to the King County Code, which is the second bullet, David Pyle, or maybe it's a Jeff question even, though, the determination if drainage review applies in accordance with chapter SMC 13.20, not King County, the manual, okay. So that portion right there, what does that actually mean or what does it do? David, do you know what I'm?
Yeah. Yeah, so I discussed this at length with Danica Globakar, and we looked back into time with regard to the city's amendments to stormwater regulations and how those things had changed over time. So what happened is when the city adopted the current stormwater manual that we have and made amendments to Title 13, the city did not correspondingly also adjust this submittal item and delete out Chapter 9.04 King County Code. We do not rely on King County Code to determine if drainage review applies. We rely on the Sammamish Municipal Code to determine if drainage review applies. Similarly, we do not rely on the King County Surface Water Design Manual, so to speak, to determine what is required with drainage review. We rely on the Sammamish adopted Surface Water Design Manual, which is the King County Manual with Sammamish amendments, and it's defined in our code. So we wanted to strike that out of there, just to be clear that we have since moved on from this language and we have a different requirement for drainage. And we wanted to be sure that it referenced the proper title and the proper terminology.
Thank you, David Pyle. That's what I was looking for. I'll be supporting this, the motion. Thank you.
I think I'm good, just for clarity's sake, David. So you and the staff will support this, that you feel like it, you know, closes whatever potential loopholes people are concerned about, but still gives staff the ability to make reasonable decisions because there are so many different types of situations that can occur. Is that correct?
Yes, we do support this proposal. We have actually received a few requests as of late for waiver of certain items on this list, and it does put staff in a very difficult position because applicants identify that you're allowed to waive it, so why don't you waive it for me? And we really like to be specific about what is required for us to initiate processing of a permit. And I think this holds the door and identifies that you need to go through the process and actually obtain all of these items prior to bringing your application in for review. Another issue that I've experienced over the years is where we, in another jurisdiction, this is not Sammamish, where we might have waived an item or two, and we did that as a matter of practice. But then what happens is the applicant is resistant to providing it in the end and then blames the city on taking too long for permit processing when actually what we're waiting on is the applicant to obtain the final item that would authorize issuance of the permit. So I have seen it work that way, too. It's a very uncomfortable position to be in. So again, we do support this. I think it's a great question. Thank you for asking.
Excellent. Thank you, David.
Okay, and then Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, David really hit my two main points, is when the discretion's too wide, it puts staff in an awkward position. It also does not provide clear expectations for applicants. And I also agree with the cleanup language added to this hybrid proposal. Well, thank you.
Okay, so I don't believe we have any more questions, and we've got a motion on the floor and a second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm not hearing any opposed. All right. Seven zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Okay, so next up is First Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement. And I believe that's Lisa.
Yeah, thank you. This item is intended to bring forward the City Manager's Employment Agreement, which was executed on June 16, 2020, for revision to Section 12 of that agreement. A few weeks ago, when we started to look at the City Manager's Agreement to begin the evaluation, we discovered some errors in Section 12, which, first of all, had some inconsistent references to COLA and provided a timeframe for the initial performance evaluation that could not, as a practical matter, take place between now and the end of the year. So with the assistance of the council's input, we were able to develop a timeframe and a manner for conducting the performance evaluations that is reflected in Section 12 of the Agenda Bill. And so the new Section 12 does a couple of things. The first thing that it does is it revises the 2020 evaluation period, so that the 2020 evaluation will review the city manager from June 16, 2020, to December 31, 2020. And that performance evaluation, which we're calling the 2020 Evaluation, will occur on or before February 2, 2021. So that's the 2020 Evaluation. Thereafter, the city manager's evaluation will include the city manager working with the city council to establish annual goals, and those annual goals will be developed jointly a reasonable time after the city's retreat. And in 2021, your retreat is scheduled for January 21st and 22nd. So a reasonable time after the annual retreat, the city manager and the council will develop annual goals, and the city manager will be evaluated against those goals before December 31 of that review year. So I hope that makes sense. All the other terms and conditions of the manager's employment contract are unchanged. Those remain in place. And I would like to acknowledge that there is a subcommittee of the council that is working on a different issue, which is the form to be used for the city manager's evaluation. And nothing in my agenda presentation tonight is intended to change or address that in any way. And I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, and I'm in the chat box. I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, so hang on. I now see one. Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So a couple of things. Thank you, Lisa, for your help with this, your voice of knowledge and reason. Appreciate your input and working with the council. I'd like to also thank the city manager. Dave Rudada has been quite helpful, quite congenial. There were some hiccups in the agreement. He could have had some expectations and could have put his foot down and gotten irritated and made things uncomfortable and difficult. And he's been a gentleman to work with and looking to accommodate and just make this happen somehow in a reasonable manner. So the committee is still working on the actual document for the evaluation. That's myself, Councilmember Trean, and Councilmember Ritchie. I would envision we'd have that done expeditiously. The other two committee members can chime in, but I would say a couple of weeks we should have that completed. We can present that to the balance of the council, run it past the city attorney, make sure it's good with her, and obviously work with the city manager to make sure that all those details work with him also. So anyway, thanks all. We'll continue to work at it, and I think we'll have a nice solution to this.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Oh, I do. Councilmember Trean.
Thank you. I'll make a motion. Sorry for the delay. I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we are moving on to the second round, small business and nonprofit grants. And I believe that that is going to be... Is that Mr. Sugg?
That is me, Mayor. Yes. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I just can't see you. That's very strange.
I know. I've been at City Hall since we went virtual, but at home tonight because I'm quarantining. But we can still get this presentation going. I will pull it up on the screen. Let's see here. One second. All righty. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Mr. City Manager. My name is Mike Sugg. I'm the senior management analyst here at the city, and tonight I am joined on the line by Christina Morgan, who is on contract, helping us get these grants reviewed and approved. And tonight, we are here for a brief presentation on the results of the second round grant program and to provide some options for funding the eligible applicants. So the second round grant program was created by council on October 20, and this came on the heels of a successful first round of funding that was awarded at the beginning of September. The general purpose of the program was to help support local small businesses and nonprofits recover from the COVID-19 closures and slowdowns, because we know that expenses didn't stop just because the business did. And at the bottom there, we've listed the minimum criteria that an applicant had to meet in order to be eligible for a grant. We won't go through each of these as we are pretty familiar with them at this point. Following approval on October 20, the application opened in early November and stayed open until the end of the month. It was promoted widely through our communications team and was also sent to about 2,800 businesses and nonprofits that have a Sammamish endorsement on their state business license. This resulted in 83 applications being submitted by local businesses and nonprofits, of which 80 met the council's minimum criteria. And you can see here that 26 were returning applicants who received a $10,000 grant. And I'm getting a note that the PowerPoint is not fitting on the screen. I apologize.
Yeah, if you just downsized it.
Yeah, it looks normal on my screen. Let me try and.
There we go. That looks, whoops, just disappeared. Okay, that works, Mike. Thank you.
I'm going to try and fullscreen it. Let's see if the same issue happens. How's that?
Nicely centered.
All right. So where was I? Let's see. Okay, so 80 of the 83 applications that were submitted. Okay, so 80 of the 83 applications that were submitted met the minimum criteria. And as you can see on this slide, 26 were returning applicants who had received a $10,000 grant in the first round. And 54 applicants were new and did not receive a grant in the first round. On average, these applicants reported a 65% revenue loss when we look at the second quarter of 2019 compared to the same period in 2020. And while this is rather unscientific, applicants self-reported that grant assistance would help save around 200 jobs at least temporarily. This slide shows the location type of the 80 eligible applicants. The dark blue bar represents new applicants and the light blue is returning applicants. As you can see, most are home-based. And in the application itself, we offer two options for home-based location types. Those that are not accessible to the public, shown here with the NA in parentheses, and those that are accessible, shown with an A in parentheses. So for example, a daycare or a hair salon that's run out of somebody's home will be considered accessible to the public because they, like storefronts, may need to implement PPE or other protective measures to accommodate the public in their homes. An example of a non-accessible home business would be something like, you know, a business that does technology consulting out of a home office, you know, with client interactions via phone and internet. And just keep in mind that these location types were self-reported. So applicants picked what they felt was most closely matched to their business type. You can also see we had a decent number of storefronts apply. Interesting, more, interestingly, more of them were returning than new. And a handful of office businesses also applied. And most of the businesses in this category are dental offices with a couple exceptions There was good diversity in the industry types reported by applicants, the most common being restaurants and food services. That followed by personal care services, which include things like hair, nails, and spa businesses. Childcare, as well as art production, also quite common. And then you can see the rest going down the list here. Here we show the total reported expenditures from March through November that were not covered by another grant or loan. It adds up to about 3.8 million and is split among the eligible expense categories shown in the pie chart on the left. Obviously, your two biggest categories are going to be related to payroll and rent or mortgage. The category titled Other Eligible Expenses, excuse me, Other Eligible Expenses includes other operating expenses such as inventory, non-PPE materials, supplies, tax services, et cetera. And then you have utilities as well as PPE and safety improvements, shown as smaller slices in the pie. One caveat to note here is that the expense question in the application said you only needed to list up to $15,000 of expenditures. So some folks limited their entries to that amount, while others listed all of their expenditures over that March through November period. So in reality, this number is likely underreporting the actual total, at least by a little bit. Oops. Oh, I apologize. Jump back up. Give me one second. In this slide, we've broken down the reported expenses by location type. The light blue bar shows the average and the dark blue bar shows the median. For this chart, I would focus more on the median value, in part due to the expense reporting caveat I mentioned on the previous slide. And as we know, median will show the middle value, so half of the applicants reported more and half of the applicants reported less expenditures. What stands out here, other than the large average reported for office locations, is the overall difference between home-based businesses and non-home-based businesses. You can see the storefront median is about three times more than the home-based median. And the office median is approaching five times more than home-based. As we know, commercial lease costs in Sammamish are very high, so we saw significantly more expenses reported in the rent category for storefronts and offices than we did for home-based. Additionally, the payroll expenses were much higher for storefronts and offices. And this makes sense, given that home-based businesses averaged 1.8 FTEs while offices and storefronts averaged 9.3 FTEs. As a reminder, the funding methodology council agreed upon is shown here. The program budget was set at $400,000. First-time applicants were to receive priority up to $10,000 based on need. If there were any funds remaining after those first-time applicants were funded, that would go towards additional grants for both new and returning applicants, up to $5,000. And should there be no funds remaining for extra grants beyond the $400,000 budget, as is the case here, council at that point could consider adding additional funding. This table shows the four potential funding options included in your agenda bill this evening. The first option funds all new applicants with grants that are scaled to achieve the $400,000 budget. The second option fully funds all new applicants, and this puts them on par with the first-rounders who received $10,000. This option would cost $474,000. The third option fully funds all new applicants, and then it provides up to $200,000, excuse me, $2,500 in extra grants to both new and returning applicants based on need. This option would cost $642,000. And the fourth option is the same as the third, but it increases the extra grant amount up to $5,000 for a total cost of approximately $804,000. There was some discussion at a previous council meeting about funding storefronts differently than home-based businesses due to the high commercial lease rates in Sammamish. As an example, if the council were to fund all storefronts and offices at $15,000 and the home base at $10,000, that would cost $609,000 total. Of course, there are a number of different ways you could slice and dice the data. These are just presented here as some options. And that is all for our brief presentation. Should the council approve funding tonight, staff will start working with applicants to finish their paperwork before releasing grant funding. And we are happy to answer any questions you might have. As mentioned, Christina is on the line with us, and she has been in the weeds working with applicants and reviewing their submittals. And so she has a lot of great information, great information should the council have any questions. With that said, I will go ahead and turn it back over to the mayor for discussion.
Okay, I think our first council member here in the chat box for grants is going to be councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. This is excellent. Two questions for you. One is the expenses that you showed. Just to clarify, those are total expenses, not just COVID-related? Or those are COVID-related only?
These are operating business expenses of any type incurred from March through November.
Got it. Excellent. And then if I understood from our report earlier in the evening, of the $2.9 million we've received in CARES Act funding, we have only spent $1.1 million. So if I do my quick math, that would leave $1.8 million remaining. So if we did fund everyone at the maximum, say for example, Option 4, we would still have roughly $1 million left. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay, great. Well, then I would like to make a motion that we fund the small business grants per Option 4.
And do I...
I second that.
Okay, who is that?
Trean.
Trean, okay. And discussion?
I'll speak to my motion very quickly. Again, based on the needs of the community, we know that small businesses in general, we don't have, you know, maybe all the data we'd like to know about every one of these small businesses that applied. But we do know that across the board, small businesses are struggling in every way. And we do have this funding. I feel like we need to get it out into the community. The more we can do that and the faster we can do that, I think the better off everyone will be. I would put a caveat in there, well, not a caveat, I would put a request in there to these small businesses that we are able to help, you know, for those of you who can, you know, do what you can, not just to keep your business going, but if you can, to help others in the community as well. So let's get this money out there and get helping people. Thanks.
Okay, I see. I want to make sure I don't have somebody before you here. Okay, so first in the chat box, I see councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm kind of torn here. I did the same math that councilmember Stewart did. And obviously, these dollars are coming from our CARES Act availability. So if we fund to the maximum, it will leave us about $1 million left. I would love to fund every single business that's been impacting even more. My, the place that I'm torn is that, again, as councilmember Stewart pointed out earlier, we don't know the impact come a month, two months, three months, four months down the line, that our other residents that depend on nonprofits that we've been funding are going to be impacted as we go forward and what their level of need is going to be. Is it going to be a million that we have left? I don't know. It's going to be 2 million that we don't have left? I don't know. So I'll probably agree to the motion, support the motion. But we just all need to be aware as councilmembers by using up approximately half of our remaining CARES Act dollars tonight to fund our local businesses. And again, God bless them. I'm all for supporting our local businesses. What we are saying, though, is that we are reducing our ability downstream, possibly help people who may have as great or greater need for food, for keeping their electricity on, for paying their rent, for taking care of their kids, for whatever their needs may be as they are unemployed or facing financial hardship. By funding this to a greater extent, we're basically saying we're willing to fund that to a lesser extent down the line. I don't know how my fellow members, councilmembers, feel about that. As I said, I'm torn. We have the dollars available. It's kind of hard not to say, let's do everything we can do to help our businesses right now and keep them in business and get them over the hump. But I'd possibly like our other councilmembers to consider and think about and maybe discuss how this is going to affect our ability to fund down the line also.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So I do have one question because the only information that was presented was expenses. And I know that it was caveated by some of the businesses only reported up to the maximum $15,000. But did we also ask about revenues? Because it's one thing to ask about expenses, but, you know, if the revenues are, you know, what's the gap, I guess, is my question. Did we ask about that?
You may recall, part of the application did ask for, it was basically, we had a revenue question that said basically, what was your total revenue in 2019? And I think there were four categories. It was somewhere in the range of 0 to 10,000, 10 to 50, 50 to 250, and then I think 250 to 1 million. So we do have the information on kind of the general scale of the revenue in 2019.
And that was what?
The categories they could select from, I believe, was...
I know, but did we have a total? We totaled up the expenses. Did we total up? And it's really hard to total it when we have these wide swaps or, you know, check this box, but did we total the revenue? I'm just trying to figure out what the overall gap is between these businesses' revenue and their expenses.
We did not go through the exercise of totaling that up.
Okay. If we do around three, that would be helpful to understand because I think that was one thing we originally talked about was trying to understand the magnitude of need. And while, you know, we didn't probably want to have people give us unless we're clear in the instructions, you know, it would have been helpful, I think, to understand beyond the 15,000. Obviously, some businesses gave us that information, but others didn't. I think, you know, as councilmembers, we want to try and understand exactly what that need is within Sammamish and per businesses. I, like councilmember Gamblin, I have kind of struggled with this one, knowing that the future is unknown for, you know, another package coming out of Congress. And even if it does come out of Congress, we don't know to what extent the city will be in receipt of any dollars. And so that makes this an exercise in conservation for me. I think when we originally set out on this quest, it was to recast our net over the businesses we didn't originally capture. And so that would be Option 2, which fully funds everyone up to 10,000. Now, I know that there is a greater need beyond that. That's been demonstrated here. But I think we can either reconvene the same committee or we can pick three new councilmembers or whoever wants to be on the committee. Because I think there is and will be a need for Round 3 for grants to try and help some of our businesses here in Sammamish. But like councilmember Gamblin, we know that there will be additional needs come the new year on the human services front as well. And while I realize if we did, you know, this $803,000, it still leaves, you know, what sounds like a large dollar volume for us. But, you know, I think we're going to potentially be doing some of this for quite some time. Everything that they're saying is that we're not going to see, you know, the 70% to 80% of the population that we need to be vaccinated until fall. And that's assuming no hiccups in the supply chain. And again, that's, you know, kind of crossing our fingers that something will come through. So, you know, I think we were savvy in the way we used our CARES Act dollars, that we are still able to help the businesses out there, you know, kind of in perpetuity, long beyond when some others did. And maybe other businesses or other municipalities gave more money upfront, you know, we probably have fewer businesses here. One thing I want to caution council on is the whole storefront versus home-based businesses. Just for, you know, full transparency, I am a small business owner here in Sammamish, but I am not eligible for any of these grants because the criteria exclude council and staff members. So I'm not speaking as someone that is eligible for any of this funding. But I do have perspective as a small business owner that is home-based. And that is, just because someone has a lease, doesn't mean that someone isn't operating their business and then having to pay their mortgage for their home-based business. So I caution the council on making assumptions about businesses that have overhead because some home-based businesses have an overhead, too. So anyway, for what it's worth. But I don't, I don't know that I'm supportive of the motion. I want to be, but I'm just, I guess I'm being very cautious as we go into 2021, knowing that, you know, I would say at the conclusion of this, we ought to be starting conversations about Round 3 and what that looks like. And that's the time and place, I think, to have conversations about, you know, do we drill down a little bit more in the types of business and, you know, do something a little bit different than what we've done on these first two rounds? So anyway, I, you know, I don't ever want to be in the business of picking winners and losers in our businesses here. So I think, you know, fully funding everyone at the same level at Option 2 is probably where I'm comfortable right now. That being said, that we initiate a Round 3 discussion concluding this. Thanks.
Okay, and then Andrew Stevens, our emergency management, has got a couple of comments he wanted to add.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to touch briefly on councilmember Gamblin's point and deputy mayor Malchows. I think it's, it is, you know, it is smart to look at this strategically. However, businesses now, I believe, are in desperate need of this assistance, going to the point that human services will obviously still need to be supported through the new year. It's been 10 months into this pandemic and we've provided roughly... and we've provided roughly $300,000, a little over $300,000 to human service organizations already. So even if we funded, if the council elected to fund this at the full capacity as Councilmember Stewart proposed, we could double that over the next, and we'd still have $600,000 left for human services if they chose to, and another $400,000 in the coffers for continuity of government on the city side. When you look at businesses, you've got to remember this money is not tax-free. So if you do elect to give a smaller amount, they're going to get roughly 70% of that. In Seattle, reports have come out that 35% of storefronts and businesses have shuttered their doors. Another 50, or up to 50%, are expected to possibly be closed by next year. So if we drag this process out possibly through another third round or later and we're just kind of trickle-charging the economy here, those businesses may not last. We've already seen a few close in Sammamish or announce their closures. So I do think it is prudent to have money reserved, but a million is a strong reserve.
Okay, next I have Councilmember Ross.
Okay, thank you. Number one, I'm doing the math too. And we have 1.1 million spent of the 2.9. If we approve 800, we're up to 1.9 spent, leaving us only 1 million. Now, if you think about where we are and what we've heard, we're about halftime in this pandemic. In other words, with the best-case scenario of the vaccine, et cetera, it probably likely will not be in control at the earliest summer, probably moving into September. So we have about nine more months of issues related to our businesses. And what we're not talking enough about, but Councilmember Gamblin did mention it, is we have human services needs. And there's also my concern about those businesses that have literally been shut down by the governor's order. And in particular, it's restaurants. I'm worried about the restaurants in our community. And peanut butter spreading, 800,000 to all businesses. Some businesses are doing better than others. And I think our most vulnerable is the restaurants in our community. So I'm concerned about us underfunding or not having funds available to help them in that context. So I go down to the second option to make everybody whole. We heard a lot of businesses talk about, and not-for-profits that had grants from other municipalities, that they're still trying to burn down their initial grants from other jurisdictions or other sources and that they're going to reach into the Sammamish in January. So I think we have time to do the right thing and approve up to make everybody at 10,000 and have that justified with documentation. And then look at a third round to consider who are the most vulnerable businesses? Who are the most vulnerable folks in our community from a human services standpoint? I think we'd lose an enormous amount of flexibility and may misappropriate a large amount of funds that could be used for those purposes. For that reason, I don't support the funding recommendation because it's too much of a peanut butter spread and may leave us with less than ample funds available to work some of those emergent needs come January, especially with our restaurants in particular.
Okay, and I'm going to go... Okay, I think, let's look here. All right, then I've got Councilmember Stewart, but she will start around two. Okay, so I'm going to comment quickly before we start around two. Being a business owner, and I can tell you also that I think the businesses need the money now. Businesses are hurting now. Waiting for round three, we would start the discussions in January, put it out there. By the time they actually got the money and stuff, we're talking March. I think that's just too long of a wait. I think they need the money and they need the help now. So I would support, and I would support, we've got the money, and I think we need to help them as much as we can. And we would still end up with a million dollars left. So I will be supporting this motion. So going to round two, Councilmember Stewart.
Yes, and I'll be brief. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Andrew. Look, nobody's more concerned about human services probably than I am. I share those concerns. I raised them earlier. I want to make sure that we're certainly helping those most in need. But I do think we have a couple of things. One, if we don't get this money to the businesses now, they may not be here for round three. There are businesses closing down weekly, including in Sammamish. So I think it is prudent for that. There's also the fact that if things do continue to stay this bad and to stay this shutdown, or things do get worse, not only do we have that million dollars, but we have not put any money from the city in yet, right? All of this is money that we have been reimbursed from the CARES Act funding. So I just want to make sure that people are aware that this isn't just an either-or. If a million dollars isn't enough to help out the human services, to help those most in need, and things really are that bad, then we as a city will need to start really looking at where we're spending money on other things and how we reallocate funds as appropriate, if need be, right? And we're really going to have to start looking at that. So there are a lot of other options. So I appreciate, Mayor, your support on this because I really don't want to see us lose any more small businesses. And we know that those small businesses will help to continue to keep people employed, which will hopefully keep them from needing more help from the human services. So there is a cycle here that we can help to either stop it spinning in the wrong direction or help it spin in the right direction.
Okay, and I'm trying to figure out this chat box here. So I believe that I see... Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm back in the same position I think others are. I think some of us feel there might be a more surgical way. I think all seven of us want to give 800,000 to the needy businesses in this case. So the number doesn't bother me, per se, as long as we're being somewhat surgical. It doesn't seem like there's ample support to figure out an alternative way to give out 800,000 if we started out with number two and added X amount for Y. You know, X versus Y. So for that reason, I'm not going to be on record not supporting our businesses. I hear the message, give them the money now. So since it's not compelling interest on this council to try an alternative to spend the 800,000, I do think it's very important that our businesses get the money as soon as possible. But I really implore us, as we go and look at that 1 million, if that's the last 1 million we have, I think we really need to examine very quickly in January what needs are really out there and not have as many, maybe less, more strict criterias to help those that are in a real emergent, on the cusp of failing in their business, to see if we can help those with the limited funds we have remaining. So for those reasons, just I support the 800,000, get the money out quickly. I support it because I want to be on record supporting our businesses. And so I will support this proposal. Since there's not a compelling dissent on this, I do respect, I mean, I assure my concerns and opinions, and I hope we are extra careful in the next round.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I think when Councilmember Ross made his first set of comments, I think he nailed it. And probably my indigestion associated with just giving the money out is that what we did is exactly what he said. We took a peanut butter knife and we went pshh, and we just gave everybody the exact same amount. But there is definitely going to be a difference between one business versus another in terms of need. And this is now two rounds of business grants we've done. And there is a way to do this where it is needs-based. And I wasn't present for the vote when we did round one, where we went well over. And it's, I mean, it's fine, but I think we do need to be more strategic about this. I will tell you, as a business owner, the difference between a 10,000 and a $15,000 grant, given every couple of months, is probably not going to save a business here in Sammamish. What is going to save a business is if we ask them for the full need. Where is your shortfall in whole? And then we can do a needs-based grant for our businesses. And maybe we can't do it all because the need is so much greater than the money that we have in consideration of human services needs that we need to tend to as well. But I think I saw somewhere that the rent for a particular restaurant is north of $15,000 a month. Well, if you look at that, the difference between getting a $10,000 grant and a $15,000 grant this month may not be enough to carry you. And if the goal here is to save our businesses, then we as the council need to do a better job of allocating these funds out to our business. And peanut buttering money out is not the way to do it. So I don't have to vote for one motion or the other to be on record saying I support our local businesses. I am one of those local businesses. But I think if we really want to save businesses, then we need to do this on a needs basis. We need to ask what the need is and not cut them off at $15,000 or whatever we're considering giving for a grant. We need to really understand it. And I said this last time. I thought that's what we were going to get when we went out, was not just asking for up to $15,000 expenses. I wanted to understand the magnitude of the need, and we didn't do that. And that's frustrating for me because maybe the need is so much greater. I'm sure it is, much greater than what we know. And so it may seem counter if I vote against this. But I think it's obvious from discussion here, this will pass. So my vote is just simply based on principles that I think that we really need to do a better job. And I do think there should be a round three, absolutely. But I think we need to do this differently. If the federal government can ask our businesses for what their expenses are and give grants that are anywhere from 10 to millions of dollars, then we can certainly ask those questions too. And it may take more effort on our part. But at least we might actually save some of the businesses rather than prolonging what could be the inevitable for them by giving them a little bit here and there along the way, rather than really filling the gap.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. Interesting conversation. I'm appreciating everybody's perspective. And I'll just say three things. I don't think anybody that I've heard doesn't support our small businesses. And I don't think there's any concerns about that. I think we all do, and I think if you don't, I don't know where you're coming from. So whether you have one, own one, owned one before, or shop at one, or have friends that own one or shop at one, we all want our local economy to succeed. So I don't think that's at issue here. I think philosophically speaking, I think that there's a point where we're kind of trying to figure out whether it makes more sense to hang on what we have in expectation of nothing else coming or to get it out there now because the need is there now. So for whatever it's worth, I've heard everyone's perspectives, and I try to wait to kind of get a grip on what's going on because I think it's interesting. I don't think it is reasonable, in my mind at least, for us to hang on to the CARES Act dollars as a government. I don't think it serves our community in a positive way. I think that the intent of the CARES Act dollars, as I read the initial legislation when it came out, was to get it to local counties and states, counties and cities, so that they could distribute it in a more meaningful way. Meaning, we know who to get it to more so than just the federal government writing a blank check. So inasmuch as we can actually try to get some resources out there now, I think we should. I don't feel real comfortable about asking a governmental entity like a city council, frankly, or the federal government, asking for that level of information from a small business. That makes me uncomfortable. I think that's an overreach by government. So I'm conscious or cognizant of that problem potentially. I think we have done a good job of getting information. I think there is a need. I think the need is critical right now. Many businesses go from red to black right at this time of year, right? I mean, they kind of go all year long trying just to survive. And then they hit Christmas, Thanksgiving, Hanukkah, whatever, and then bang, they get into the black. Well, not this year. So by getting some money out there, whether it's a peanut butter spread approach or a needs-based thing, that's things we should talk about going forward. And we haven't done that yet for a variety of reasons. But I appreciate that that's something we may want to consider as long as it isn't asking for so much information that it's, you know, it's not necessarily helpful, becomes burdensome, and maybe an overreach of government. So I support putting the money as much as we possibly can out there. And to encourage, last thing I'll say is I'll encourage, in the extra time that Mike Sugg and the folks over at the management resources guys have and the city managers' resources have, if there's any other grants that are available, if there's anything our lobbyists can do, if there's anything we as individual councilmembers can do on a lobbying basis or to reach out to the county or to talk to the state during lobby AWC days, I think we need to do that. I think we need to actually go about trying to get money for our community. We can do that. We can be our own advocates for our own community. And I think that's something we should try to do, not sit passively back and hope and wish and pray. But let's go find some resources. Let's go try to help people. And let's go get some money for our community. Let's get it out there in the community. Let's spend it. Let's bring those resources in. Let's go and turn around and not just sit on the money and be worried. The need is now. There's going to be a need in the future, probably, but the need is now. So I would encourage us to get the money out of the government coffers and into our small businesses' hands, whether they're brick and mortar or home-based, immediately. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other comments? I'm not seeing any. Okay, so I'm going to have Councilmember Stewart. I'm going to have you repeat your motion.
Yes, my motion is that the council approve funding for our grant program according to option four, which would fully fund new applicants at $10,000, up to $10,000 if they have the expenses. And new and returning applicants can receive up to an additional $5,000 for a total cost of $803,976.
Okay, and I'm going to have Lita do a roll call on the vote.
Councilmember Kent Train.
So before I vote, I just want to make one quick correction, please. It's up to 15,000, option four.
Well, yeah, it's 10 and then a possible additional five. So it's up to 15 in total.
Oh, additional five, what's that?
Right, because returning applicants can only get five.
Correct. Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Let's keep it going. That was an aye from Train, right?
Okay, Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Yes.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malcha. Mayor Karen Moran.
Aye.
Is that a 6-1 or 6-2?
Is that a six one or seven zero?
Nope. I believe it was a six one.
Thank you.
Okay. Then moving on, the next thing we have is the CARES Act reimbursement completed. Who is, who's up for that? Is that Mr. Sugg?
Dave, would you like me to take that one? Yes, I would be happy to provide this information. So this agenda item is simply an informational item to convey that our CARES Act reimbursement is now complete. And earlier this year, the city became eligible to receive, as we just discussed, 2.9 million in federal CARES Act funding on a reimbursement basis as passed through from the Washington State Department of Commerce. The funding was intended to help communities cover expenses arising from the COVID-19 emergency, such as staffing, procurement of protective equipment, and planning for safe reopening and recovery. On October 6th, the city manager presented his recommended plan for implementing the city's CARES Act allocation. This plan involved seeking reimbursement for Eastside Fire and Rescue's COVID-19 expenses, which would in turn create budget savings on the city's contract with EFOR an equivalent amount of 2.9 million. These budget savings could then be used to continue providing COVID-19 support to the community without the restrictions associated with federal funds. Following the council's approval of this plan, staff began the reimbursement process through Commerce. The first reimbursement request was approved in November, the second in early December. And at this time, the city has received full reimbursement for the entire $2,898,450 originally allocated to Sammamish. And while many jurisdictions have scrambled to spend their CARES Act allocation by the end of the year, the city has been able to spend its money past the end of the year. We did meet our deadline for reimbursement with the Department of Commerce, and the resulting budget savings do not have any time restrictions. When originally presented in October, the city manager and council stressed the importance of this benefit in light of a potential second wave of cases over the coming months. A second wave of cases, as we all know, has now arrived. This approach allows the city to continue building on its support for businesses, nonprofits, and government operations into 2021. And with that, I will turn it back to the mayor.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to see what kind of questions that we have. I'm sure we have questions for you. And we do.
You got me and Pam.
Okay. So Councilmember Stewart.
No, Karen, I'm actually in there first.
Oh, are you, are you right before there? Okay. So Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I, I appreciate this. I certainly appreciate that the city manager was able to suggest to us a way that allowed for us to get the full reimbursement for these funds and have the ability, long beyond some of our other jurisdictions, to assist both on the business front as well as the human service front. I think that will be much appreciated by both come 2021. And with that, based on my comments in the previous item, I do want to, if I have to make a motion, I, I will, and I'll just make a motion so we can vote on it. I would like to look at a round three for business grants. I think it's something that we need to do. And I would like it to, to be looked at by committee, whether, again, whether it's the same committee or a different one. And it's needs-based. And I think we need to ask for the full expenses and the gap. I think that's what we really want to try and understand is, is what is this gap for these businesses? And that way, we can make a true effort at trying to save some of them so they do not go under before we have enough of our population vaccinated.
Well, I totally agree with you. So I would, I would definitely second that motion. I think we need to have, I definitely think we need to have another round. And we can start working on that right away in January.
That would be, that would be the hope. I mean, certainly if there's a committee together, the committee can start meeting outside of meetings that will be in 2021. And that way, they'd be able to present to the rest of the council and be prepared to hit their ground running.
And I don't know if you want to have the same committee. I would like to get involved in that committee somehow.
I'm happy to step off, and you can step on in my place.
Oh, you don't want to, well, actually, you have, you have a lot of definite things you want to see done. So I would suggest you stay on that committee.
Okay. I'm happy to stay on too. It's out of the council's pleasure.
Okay. Well, we can discuss at the first meeting in January. But, yeah, we definitely need to do that. So you've got a, I don't think we need a motion. I think everybody agrees that we need to have that third round coming up. So let's make sure that that makes it on to the agenda for the first meeting in January.
Well, because it was a motion and it has a second, we need to vote on it.
I have a question.
Who, okay, who just, who just said that I have a question? Okay. Councilmember Trine.
Call question. So as, as the discussion was going on prior to the business, what I wrote, the business grants, was I wondered if a third round of business grants would, if necessary, or if on a needs-based grant, would this be something, and maybe this is a question for the city manager, but would this be something that we'd want to put on the agenda for the retreat? That it's something that maybe staff could actually do? I don't know. So, Mr. City Manager, is that an option for us? That the third round of business grants could be on a, if it's on a needs base, which I heard loud and clear, could it be during the retreat or put on there to go on as a work item?
Councilman Trine, Mayor Council, I don't know why it couldn't. Can certainly add it as an item for the agenda for the retreat.
Okay. Thank, it's all, I'm, I'm, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. And we had.
Yep. I'm in the queue.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah. So I am absolutely supportive of, you know, looking at a, a third round. I would agree that we're not out of the woods. My recommendation would be that we do a couple of things. One, we need to understand our human services needs. I heard a lot of council members express concern that we make sure we have appropriate funding for human services as well. And while I'm not super confident that the other Washington is going to provide everything that we need as cities, I am reasonably confident that they will have some relief that may in fact benefit businesses. So I would recommend that before we go too far down this path, we see what comes out of the other Washington and understand what kind of help will be coming for businesses because we certainly don't need to, we certainly have less money than the federal government does. So that, and then my third item is, I'm not sure that this needs to be a, something we deal with at the retreat because my understanding would be that the retreat would be more focused on our goals and objectives on a broader level and not necessarily diving deep into this. We certainly could do that. But I, I think we would have time better spent on this, either having it on the first meeting agenda in January and diving into understanding more and working with the, the staff offline. So that, that would just be my recommendation. I understand, Councilmember Trine, I think it would be great to get lots of input from the council. I'm just not sure that using retreat time for this particular item is necessarily in line with the, sort of the overarching goals of, of an annual retreat. So those would be my, my three points. Thanks.
Okay. And looking in chat box, I think we are covered here.
Yep. It's me. I'm in there.
Hang on.
Can I go?
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah. Councilmember Stewart actually said exactly what I was thinking, which is, I would actually prefer this not to be a retreat item. The retreat is forward-looking. And while our, you know, response to COVID in general, forward-looking through 2021 is certainly an appropriate topic, this would just be kind of tucked under that if that becomes a, a retreat topic. But I would agree, I think both the mayor and Councilmember Stewart stated, you know, getting it on the first meeting of January. And again, if we have, you know, the existing committee or if we want to rearrange it now, there is opportunity prior to that for a committee of three to start having a few discussions about, you know, how to tackle this. So at any rate, for what it's worth, I think this should be covered at the first meeting in January.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor.
Can we get that restated, specifically what that is, please?
I'm, I'm in the queue.
You're in the queue?
I am.
There you go. You must have just snuck in there. Okay. Councilmember Ross.
I, I, I did sneak in. A, a couple of things. I, I agree with everything Council, Deputy Mayor Malcha stated that it would be nice to get started with a committee of three right away so that we hit the ground running in January. I don't, I don't think it'd be a good fit for the retreat. So I, to expedite everything, and I know the mayor, Moran, expressed an interest to be on the committee, to make that possible, I'll step aside and drop off that committee and reckon that Mayor Moran replaces me on that. So then it'd become Councilmember Stewart, Mayor Moran, and Deputy Mayor Malcha, three. And that, the three of them as part of the motion would get started right away, arranged to meet, and the next, they can meet before January, based on the committee's efforts. But they are targeting, they report out something potentially as first means. So if we want to add that to the motion, I don't know how the committee feels, but I, I'll step aside to make this possible so we can move fast.
And then, and then, and then, Councilmember Stewart was the other one that was on the committee. And then, of course, there's the rest of the council.
Well, I appreciate that. But I mean, I don't want to, I mean, if you guys have a way you're, you were working, I don't really want to upset that, rock that boat or anything.
Okay. So you would fundamentally think it'd be a committee as it was?
Yeah.
I, I, I.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to jump on in January. I mean, but I don't want to, holidays are messy enough, much less to, to try to rock that boat when you're trying to get something done in a hurry.
Well, I, I mean, you're, you're showing an interest, and I, and I respect that interest. So I'm very much would be perfectly happy to step aside. And, but I, you're expressing a different concern about even getting together before January. That's something, that's a different, different issue.
Okay. Well, I really do appreciate that. That's very, but I'll let you stay on the committee because I don't really want to make any big changes right now because I don't think that's fair to the committee at this point in time. Let you guys continue working. Okay. So Councilmember, do you want to make your motion?
I'll, I'll restate the motion, yes. So I was asking for us to initiate a round three for business grants. And I want to, at the very least, I want to ask for full expenses so that we understand the magnitude of the need and that it then be needs-based.
Sorry, Mayor, I have one question as she restated that. Could I ask a clarifying question?
I'd say yes. Go ahead.
So Deputy Mayor, I hear you saying that you want the full expenses. I'm assuming you also want to understand revenue impacts as well, right? Because I might have $10 million in expenses, but if I have $100 million in revenue, then it's not really a big deal, right?
Yes. And I think that's what I'd expressed earlier.
Okay.
But we did not get to understand the magnitude of the need from our businesses. We asked them for up to 15. Some of them gave us more. And I would frankly be very interested, I don't care if you take the, you know, committee, or the, excuse me, the business names off of there. I think just to understand how big the need is. But again, without the revenue piece, like I said earlier, and like Councilmember Stewart just mentioned, it's kind of, you know, the expenses are not terribly meaningful without understanding the gap. And that's kind of what I was after.
Okay. Just wanted to get clarification. And, yeah, I, just so you know, I do think that there are some lessons learned from other jurisdictions that we can get to understand what the true impacts are and still make sure we're not collecting information that might get, that might get touchy. But yes, I'm happy to explore that with you. Thanks.
I would suggest going to Redmond. We put in for a business grant through Redmond, and they wanted to see us put in a six, I think it was a six-month, could have been three-month. But we had to do a business plan so that they could see, basically it was, they wanted to make sure you weren't going to go under in that six months. But they wanted to see how you were spending your money during that timeframe. So they could see how your expenses fell. And actually, it was a good exercise in how you spent your money. So that was, it was actually pretty useful. Okay. Any, or any other questions for, regarding the motion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Seven zero. Okay. Next up, we have got the council and city manager.
Hold on. Madam Mayor, I still had a question on the original agenda item before the motion for a third round of business grants.
Okay.
Sorry. I just wanted to clarify for the public and to make sure that I understand this correctly. So this was an agenda item that was informative to say, we submitted and got that money back. We still have as part of a, a motion that we passed as a council that we need to make sure that all of this money does in fact get spent on the community needs on, based on COVID impacts. So while we may have gotten the reimbursement, we still have a lot of work to do to get this money out into the community, correct?
Correct.
But this wasn't implying that we were all done with the CARES Act and we'll still get our monthly reports on the spending?
Correct. So this was, I think, more to say that, you know, the plan that we had articulated previously was acceptable to Commerce. They agreed with it, and we've received the reimbursement. But that's, you know, not to say that there isn't additional work to be done, as you mentioned.
Okay. And I just want to make sure, because we continue to get the updates on, you know, we've spent about this much. Have we, and did I just miss it? But did we get the specific detailed reports on exactly what the city has spent on COVID-related expenses outside of business grants and human services grants?
Yep.
Like down to the penny? Because we should have that accounting.
Is Andrew Stevens on the line?
Yeah. Councilmember Stewart. That is all tracked in our AP Finance. We can send that report over to you minus the grants.
Yeah. Well, we're supposed to be getting a monthly report on that spending. So I would think that we would get that portion, like what the city spent plus, you know, all of our grants. So we see the accounting for the entirety of the CARES Act funding. So it would be great if we could get that detailed report on a monthly basis as we had requested.
Yeah. And I have, if you go back to the previous reports to council, at every regular meeting, I normally do break it down by category, by business grants, by government services, by contracted cost or emergency protective measures. I just did not tonight because in reality, only about $20,000 has been spent in the last two weeks. It's my last report.
Yeah. Again, if we can just get that on a, on a monthly basis in our inboxes so we have that detail, that would be great. I appreciate that, Andrew. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Did you have any other questions? Okay, did you have any other questions on that?
I am good. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Okay, so the next thing that we have then is council reports and city manager report. Did you have, okay, we have no city manager report. That leads us to Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I'll let you read what's in my report, but I will add to it. I know Councilmember Ross was also on the call today with, through SCA for King County Public Health with Patty Hayes. And I believe that Deanna Dawson sent out the slides to all SCA members earlier today, so you kind of got the gist of it. One takeaway from it is that they did not see the bump that they might have anticipated, and I think that a lot of portions of the country have seen relative to Thanksgiving and gatherings. So that was good news. There are still an uptick, obviously, in hospitalizations, but they are faring okay. So I guess people actually maybe didn't get together or something over Thanksgiving, but that was at least a small glimmer of hope out of that. So if you missed those slides, they should be in your inbox.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm glad that you guys watched that. I had it recorded and haven't watched it yet. Okay, so is that, if I have nothing else here, anybody have anything for the good of the order?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
I can always sign on, you can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Hey, everybody have a wonderful holiday, wonderful and safe holiday season. Happy holidays, guys.
Bye.
Bye.